Or a public safety power shut-off. We really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house. And we're watching a fire come down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening. And I prayed for the people behind me.
A 10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how, if it wasn't for my neighbor, who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that "go" piece. And it's simply that, it's "go." Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code RED is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code RED call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones Fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you. Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise, to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to "go" when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really, what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home so when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
Okay, folks. Let's get started. Commissioner McAtier, if you'll lead us in the pledge, please.
Copy, too.
Thank you. Shelley's making a guest appearance today. Jodina and Shelley. So if you can please call the roll.
Yes, Chair. Commissioner Duncan? Here. Commissioner McAtier?
Here.
Commissioner Garst?
Here.
Commissioner Millman? And Chair Mastodonato? Please note for the record that Commissioner Millman is absent.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you, Chair.
Any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tyler. Okay, at this time, I will open up the floor to general public comment. This is the time in the meeting where any member of the public who wishes to address the commission on any item that is not on today's agenda, you can approach the podium, give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address the commission on anything not on the agenda. That said, I will open the public comment period. Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, hearing none, I will close the public comment period. We're listed as no commission business. Any commissioners have anything at this time? No?
Not yet. I'll have something at the end.
Okay, moving on to the consent items. We have actually five items on the consent agenda to be approved. The consent items only require a motion to approve. And Tyler, if you can do us a favor and maybe go over these three things just briefly.
Certainly. The three items, they include two meeting minutes, draft meeting minutes from previous planning commission meetings, the first of which is on October 12th of 2023. The next is March 14th, 2024. And then there's three development agreement reviews, which are annual reviews on projects that were previously approved that included a development agreement, one of which is Harmony Ridge subdivision. The next is the Ananda Development. And then the last one is, or the first one, I guess, number four, is the Terra Alta, which is Deer Creek Park 2.
I'm sorry, Chair, if I can interrupt. We are having some microphone issues. They're both squelching, not working and working, and the volumes aren't going on and off. So maybe take a two-minute break so I can figure this out, if you don't mind.
Sure. Let's take two minutes, folks.
I believe Tyler was in the middle of-
Correct, talking about the consent items. So, a development agreement is an agreement that the county enters into with the developer, and the developer provides some public benefit in lieu of things like extended timelines for their project. So, annually, the code requires that that be reviewed by the planning commission. And so, these documents are an update on what has occurred since the last time they brought their annual review to you.
Okay, I'll move for adoption of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, the consent items are passed. Motion carries. Okay. At this time, we will open the scheduled public hearing on the agenda, the one agenda item on the agenda today. And I'm happy to see that Tyler's name is on this one. He will be making the presentation. I would assume that all these folks in the audience today are here on this item. Let me just explain a little bit on how this will work. We, Tyler, who is the principal planner on this item, will give a presentation, go through the project, and all the nooks and crannies of it. At that time, after that, we will, the commission may have some questions for Tyler. We'll do a little back and forth. We'll also give the applicant, if the applicant is here and wishes to speak, the opportunity to speak after that, and we may have some question, the commission may have some questions for the applicant as well after that. Then, I will open up the public hearing, where any members of the public who wishes to speak on this matter can come up to the podium. I'll just go over the rules of that now. If you're speaking as an individual, you'll come to the podium, give us your name and address. You have three minutes to speak. If you're representing an organization, we could extend that time five minutes. And then, try to keep those comments fresh and new. If we're hearing the same thing over and over again, it's kind of taking time from everyone. So, that being said, I'll hand it to you, Tyler.
Great, thank you, Honorable Chairman, members of the planning commission. I'm Tyler Barrington, principal planner for the record. I'd like to note that this project was originally processed by Marie Maniscalco, an associate planner with our department, and she completed the initial study and took a new position, and I took the project over from there. So, I'm just asking for some kindness and details. The project before you is a Wolfcraft Collective, also known as a Wolfcraft School. It's a proposed use permit, management plans, a petition for exception to road standards, as well as a proposed mitigated negative declaration. The project applicant is Leslie Barbarzett, and I also recognize Jay Morgan, who's with us today, is also a project applicant. And the project representative is millennial, planning and engineering. I will give that a try. All right, so the project site is located at 10734 Wolf Road in South Nevada County, approximately three quarters of a mile.
Too loud.
Okay, let's start this slide over. So, the proposed project is located at 10734 Wolf Road, approximately three quarters of a mile from the State Highway 49 and Wolf Road intersection. The parcel size is approximately 15.77 acres and has a general plan designation of rural ten. It also has a corresponding zoning designation of general agriculture with a 10-acre minimum parcel size or density. The surrounding land uses are primarily rural residential and agricultural in nature, and for some of the commissioners that have been with us for a while, across the street is the former Montessori school development. The site itself is undeveloped primarily with a few ranch roads, some bridges crossing an NID canal. It includes several onsite resources, including a pond, the NID canal I mentioned, riparian and wetland area, and scattered oak woodlands. The proposed access is off of an existing driveway off of Wolf Road that'll be improved as a part of this project. For some background on the project, originally in 2021, the applicant submitted a pre-application to the community development agency. A pre-application is an opportunity for a developer, before spending money on engineering and the planning process, to get some feedback from county and state responsible agencies regarding the feasibility of the project and what typical conditions of approval would apply. Following that pre-application, the applicant submitted their formal application on June 27, 2023, and that went through three rounds, four rounds of review by the county agencies and to the point of being deemed complete. The exhibit before you shows the location of the project site, as well as the surrounding property owners that were noticed for the parcel, for the project. So, what's being seeked today? The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit as allowed in the General Agricultural Zoning District for a low-intensity camp and a craft school. The original application and your staff report reflects the fact that originally the applicant was requesting also a community gathering and social event facility to host things like craft fairs, weddings, and other similar events. I'm showing that as being stricken out because we'll get into it in the next couple of slides, but the applicant has formally requested that that be withdrawn from their request. The two management plans are associated for potential impacts to aquatic resources due to development or disturbance occurring within the setbacks of those resources as identified with the county's resource protection standards. It also includes a landmark oak grove management plan for the removal of approximately 12 trees within the landmark oak grove. There is a proposed petition for exception to the county road standards, which is required when roads are over 10% in slope and grade. There's a small portion of the road which, near the NID canal towards the, I guess it would be the eastern side of the property, that is, I guess, excuse me, this is orientated incorrectly, north is to the right. So, towards the top of the property, I'll show it in the slide coming up. That exceeds over 16%, but is below 20%. And then, of course, I mentioned the proposed mitigated negative declaration. I wanted to include an air photo to give the commission and the public a view of the property from above. As you can see, there are areas of open grasslands that are being utilized by the project. There's also areas of landmark oak groves, the pond, and on the top of the picture is the area of riparian area. So, this slide is dedicated to the removal of the proposed portion of the entitlement that includes the community meeting and social event facility. Originally proposed, applicant was requesting up to 24 events annually, which is two per month. That would allow for 150 guests per event. Staff has provided the planning commission with a memo dated July 25, 2024, that includes the applicant's official request for removal of this portion of their entitlements. Also includes an amended set of project conditions of approval. And the reason that those are amended is because many of the conditions are focused on that event use, and without the event use, those conditions no longer apply. Staff's thought would be to, as shown them as being stricken out in the draft before you, should the planning commission desire to approve this project, the final approval letter will show those as just being removed, and that language won't be in there anymore. Staff did not want to just renumber all the conditions of approval because of all the ties between the staff report and references to those conditions of approval would be invalidated by changing that at this time. One of the significant changes to this project would be a reduction in approximately 22,000 square feet of grading that was proposed as a part of the project for events. That's shown in the blow-up on the left-hand side of the project. This also results in reduced impacts to traffic, to noise, and allows for a reduced parking, which further reduces the impacts of the project. Previously, the applicant was proposing 61 parking spaces, and as revised, they're proposing 44 with seven accessible spaces, and I'll get into that a little bit more later on in the presentation. One of the most specific amendments to this project conditions of approval is the amendment to condition A1, which is kind of the project description condition. This amendment includes adding a statement that says, "Events pursuant to Nevada County Code Title 12, Chapter 3, Section 12.03.070 are not authorized by this use permit." Most of the other conditions of approval that have been amended include just changing the number of parking spaces from 61 to 44. The A5 I highlight as the noise condition, that was amended because it references both the timing for when events needed to cease, as well as the timing of operations for the craft school. And so, it's amended just to reflect that the events is no longer included as part of this permit. And then, all the other ones that are proposed to be removed, as I've mentioned, are specifically for events and not for the craft school itself or the low-intensity camp. So, at this point, the project is requesting the approval of a low-intensity camp pursuant to Nevada County Development Code 12.0.63. And I felt for the public and for the planning commission, it'd be important to understand what that means and what that's defined as. And so, for the record, I will read the county's definition of a low-intensity camp. That is, "A facility providing for the sustained experience through various social, recreational, educational, and/or religious opportunities in a group setting that do not exceed an overall density of four campers per acre for a period of less than 30 consecutive days." Here's the important part related to the craft school, is that they normally include trained leadership, organized programs, and the resources of natural surroundings to provide for this experience. Individual facilities include cabins, tent sites, sleeping platforms, group eating and meeting facilities, lodges, and various indoor and outdoor recreational facilities and similar facilities, but shall include recreational vehicles. I will note that originally, the project proposed to include some recreational vehicles as a part of their camping, and through the review process, those were removed and replaced with tent platforms. This use is allowed in the General Agricultural Zoning District, where this project is located, with a conditional use permit. Getting into the other project entitlements, the management plan, I mentioned, the county resource protection standards include protection measures for both water courses, wetlands, and repairing areas, as well as oak woodlands. The project applicant, through their design, has identified that some potential roads, the proposed septic system, and a few of the campsites near the pond would encroach within the required setbacks. A pond has a 100-foot setback in Nevada County. NID canals have a 20-foot setback from the downhill side of the canal and 100-foot setback from the uphill side of the canal, and wetlands have a 100-foot setback. Due to the fact that they were required, some disturbance within those areas, the management plan is required. This management plan recommends conditions of approval, which were also contained as mitigation measures in the environmental document. That includes best management practices for working around water courses, including erosion control. It also requires restorative landscaping around the pond and wetland areas. Through the review, and I'll get into this a little bit later, the initial study was revised to include surveys, pre-construction surveys for the western pond turtle prior to disturbing within those areas, as well as a biological monitor being onsite and a notification to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife regarding whether or not a stream bed alteration agreement is required for this project. The oak woodlands, approximately 12 will be removed within the grove, and I believe about 19 trees total, some of which are outside of the grove. The project biologists reviewed this impact and provided recommendation for planting of 24 blue oak trees onsite. This is required by mitigation or condition A30, and I'll mention that the references to the numbers A27 and such forth is references directly to conditions of approval that are required. The landscape plan actually provides for 48 blue oak trees, so doubling that number to compensate for potential impacts of the project. There's also standard best management practices for oak trees, including not working within the drip line of protected trees that are to be remained and other similar requirements. The approach taken by the project biologists is consistent with other management plans that have been approved in Nevada County, and is consistent with the code requirements for those particular sections. Regarding the Nevada County road standards, roads are allowed to go up to 10% grade in Nevada County, and the code standards have a process for a petition for exceptions when it exceeds that standard. As I mentioned, there's a small portion of the road that exceeds and gets to about 16% near where it crosses the NID canal, and therefore, this petition was required. There are conditions of approval from the both Departments of Public Works, as well as the fire department, fire office of the county fire marshal, that will ensure that the proposed road will be safe and that'll meet the county's road standards. Pursuant to that code, the county Department of Public Works is responsible for making a recommendation on whether or not to approve the petition, and this proposed petition is also, has been supported by that department, as well as the county fire marshal. So, this is the original site plan that was proposed for the project. As you can see, they've done their best to try and use the open areas, areas shaded in green are the landmark oak grove, the ponds off to the right, as you can see, the four proposed platforms, and I'll go into a little bit more detail, encroach within that setback. And the idea behind it, which the applicant can also explain, is to provide for that natural experience and camping in the pond. The revised site plan, the reason I wanted to provide it is that it shows that there are parking spaces that have been reduced primarily in this area and then here, which reduces the amount of grading required and the amount of impervious surface on the site. This project is proposed to be a phased project over three phases. The Nevada County Code allows for phased projects to occur over a period of seven years versus a typical three-year period with two possible extensions of time. Much of the critical infrastructure will be made, completed during the first phase of the development. That includes the driveway encroachment on the Wolf Road, the interior circulation roads, and then parking areas sufficient for the buildings. As I previously mentioned, there are seven ADA spaces required. Each of the buildings are spread out, and therefore, an ADA space will be provided for each of those amenities. Within the first phase, the applicant is proposing to construct their ceramic shop, which includes a bathroom, their barn for animal keeping and storage, two of their classrooms, and their office building. Their office building will include a lobby, some retail that will provide tools and other things for campers onsite to participate in the classes, bike storage, a laundry room, and then a bathroom. Within Phase One also includes nine proposed tent cabins that include a restroom. These are conditioned with both air conditioning and heating, and underneath each of the individual tent cabins includes a parking space. There'll be four camping decks, approximately 750 square feet, a shared restroom also in that location near the pond. The applicant is proposing to provide a food truck in the first phase of the project that'll be later converted to a cafe if approved, and provide the utilities for that. I did strike out the events areas, as I previously mentioned, but just wanted to show that because that was included as the original conditions of approval and their project description. They also have a trash enclosure, a large septic system, stormwater areas for treating runoff, fencing and retaining walls, a monument sign at the entrance, improvements to Wolf Road, including a left-hand turn lane and signage, and then insulation of landscaping, hardscaping, and lighting. This project is also requesting to utilize a recreational vehicle as security housing as allowed for pursuant to Section 12.03.150 of the Nevada County Code, which allows for security housing with the use permit. So, this slide shows the phasing plan. The tan is proposed phasing for the first phase. The purple is the second phase, and then the green is the third phase. The applicant is proposing their security housing and recreational vehicle in the upper portion of the property. The next few photos will be some architectural renderings of the proposed buildings that are being proposed during this phase, and I'll talk a little bit about the materials later on. So, the ceramic studio is going to be blended into the wall and use standing seam roofs and walls with board form concrete at the base. As you can see, they've attempted to work that into the side of the hill to reduce grading and help it blend better with the surrounding area. The proposed barn, approximately 3,200 square feet, will be metal sided. Here's a rendering of the proposed classroom with glass roll-up doors. Similar materials will be used throughout the entire site. Here's the elevation of the proposed office. The camping tent cabins, as I mentioned, with the parking spaces below them, and they do have a rendering of what that parking area will look like later on. And then, the trash enclosure, which will include corrugated metal roof and board form concrete surrounding it. In Phase Two, the applicant proposes to convert the classroom to a fiber studio, and I'll let them speak more about what that means. They're proposing to construct their metal shop, approximately 2,400 square feet, their wood shop, also approximately 2,400 square feet, the two additional tent cabins near where the residence is shown, about 450 square feet. My understanding is those will be used for the instructors that come onsite to help support the classrooms. They were proposing the residence in Phase Two. I just want to note for the commission that a residence is allowed use and not subject to this use permit. So, if they choose to construct it later, earlier, or somewhere else on the property, as long as they avoid site-sensitive resources, they have that right as a property owner. But they're just showing it for reference of where they might locate it. Phase Two will include an additional 12 parking spaces to support those two buildings that will be included, and then insulation of the landscaping, hardscaping, and lighting commensurate with as those amenities come online. So, in the lower part of the screen, you can see where the metal and the wood shop are located, those two tent cabins that I mentioned in the residence, and then the classroom, the upper classroom of the two, kind of where the cursor is, will be converted to a fiber studio. Here's the architecture for the proposed fiber art studio, and then the elevation for the metal shop, and I believe the wood shop are somewhat identical to one another. For Phase Three, the applicant is proposing to convert the, or to construct the commercial cafe with a bathroom, approximately 1,000 square feet, with a 500-square-foot outdoor dining area. The utilities would be installed as a part of Phase One. And at that time, it's assumed that the food truck would no longer be utilized or needed on the site. And then, they would replace the 10 tent cabins, or the nine tent cabins, with actual full-size or regular cabins, the same square footage as the tent cabins. I want to point out, condition A20, this allows for flexibility in the phasing. It allows them to construct different parts of the project at different times, so long as the infrastructure is in place, and that includes landscaping, lighting, water, sewer, roads, parking, et cetera. So, here's Phase Three, the cafe and the converted tent cabins, and here's a rendering of the proposed cafe using similar architecture styles as the rest of the development. So, an example of some of the building materials proposed, you can see the lighting fixture. There's a rendering of what the glass doors will look like on the left-hand side. You can see what the tent cabin and the cabin carport screening will look like. Their siding is standing seam metal siding with corten siding and board form concrete, as I mentioned. And roofing is proposed to be standing metal seam. This is durable materials that are consistent with the Nevada County Design Guidelines in this area. Throughout your staff report, there's documentation about how this project can conform and has conformed with the county's site development standards. This slide is intended to provide some details on that. So, within the agricultural zoning district, the maximum allowed height for a building is 45 feet. The largest proposed building on this project is 30 feet and therefore conforms to this requirement. As I mentioned, the design is consistent with the Nevada County Design Guidelines. Regarding open space and screening, only 15% is required. However, the applicant is proposing 85% open space on their site. They also will provide sufficient screening along the roadways and to neighboring properties to meet this standard. The previous slide showed a rendering of the proposed light as a gooseneck downward-facing fully shielded light. All lighting will be consistent with this. The applicant also provided a photometric plan that documents that there were not resulting light spill off-site of the proposed project. As I mentioned, the solid waste enclosure is consistent with the design of the other buildings, which is required by the code. It also provides for the adequate backup space for waste management to access the site. I mentioned the reduction in parking. The county's code requires four spaces per camper in, for a low-intensity camp. The applicant is requesting a maximum of 40 campers and 10 employees, and therefore, a maximum or minimum requirement of parking spaces will be 13. However, to accommodate the spread-out nature of the site, they're proposing 44 with the reduced scope of the project. reduced scope of the project. Landscaping is an important part of projects in Nevada County to help provide for beautification, shading, screening of projects. This proposed project includes a landscaping plan, which is included in your packet. It utilizes many of the existing trees and native vegetation. I mentioned adequate screening the roads and neighboring properties, the aquatic plant There's also extensive landscaping and decorative paths and features that are going to be utilized throughout the site. Staff would find that this project goes well above and beyond the minimum landscaping requirements for a project, including enhancing the onsite water features to provide additional habitat for its plant animal species. Within your conditions of approval as revised, it includes many standard landscape conditions of approval. Those include ensuring that all landscaping is installed and maintained. It includes requiring that the applicant meet the state model water efficient landscape ordinance. Many of the plant materials provided were picked specifically due to their drought-tolerant and native nature, and also to fit in with the meadow, the riparian area, and the pond This slide is meant to provide for some idea of what they're proposing in terms of hardscapes and paths throughout the area, using boulder stream crossings, bridges. There's also a raised garden planting area, which applicant will get to in more detail. For paving, the applicant is going to utilize pervious concrete pavers and some pervious paving throughout the site to help keep it under impervious surface levels. Fencing and retaining walls will use board form concrete, and then you can see the benches will utilize natural materials. Kind of hard to see, but this slide documents the proposed planting palette. They've identified plants for the oak woodland, for the riparian area, and for other areas throughout the site. In total, the applicant's landscape plan indicates that they'll plant approximately 112 trees, 1,823 shrubs, 814 riparian area plants, and another 1,000 approximate meadow plants. As you can see, they've gone through a great level of detail to document and to provide plants that fit in with their existing environment. And as I mentioned, this is overly consistent with the county's requirements for landscaping. For signage, the applicant is proposing a monument sign, two-sided monument sign located at the entrance. One of the pictures is somewhat of a rendering of where the sign will be located. It'll be a patina'd metal sign with knockout lettering and a logo. It has upward or top-mounted downward-facing lighting to highlight the sign. The county's codes will allow for up to 40 square feet and eight-foot-tall sign. However, they're proposing a 12-square-foot sign, no larger than four feet tall. This sign is compliant with this county sign code. The applicant is also providing onsite building signage and wayfinding signage throughout the site. The wayfinding signage is going to be either patina'd metal or wood. Those are some examples that they're proposing. The I would and then the proposed signs on the building would be patina'd metal. I would note that wayfinding and building signage such as this is actually exempt from the county's sign guidelines and requirements, but because it's in a rural area and because some of their sign examples show internally lit or backlit channel letter signs, there is a condition of approval to prohibit internally lit lighting or backlit lighting, which is required typically and allowed in community regions. And this is intended to help provide for additional protection of the rural character of the area. Regarding environmental review, within your packet is a revised draft mitigated negative declaration. The revisions are a result of comments received from the Department of Toxic and Substance Control, as well as the Department of Fish and Wildlife. DTSC added a requirement to test for certain heavy metals during the soil removal process. There was an existing mitigation measure that required them to test the soil for naturally occurring asbestos, as this is part of Nevada County is in the area for known gabro soils and other serpentine soils. The Department of Fish and Wildlife added the requirement for the Western Pond Turtle Surveys. There was already identified impacts to water courses as a result of this project, and therefore no new significant impacts were identified as a result of these additional mitigation measures. The initial study contained in your staff report as attachment two has underlining showing where those areas have been added. Other comments that were received from those two agencies were included as conditions of approval because they weren't specifically addressing an impact identified by the project. They were just standard requirements of that agency, very similar to you're required to get a building permit for a project for a house. We don't need a condition that says get a building permit because that's a requirement. Attachment seven of your staff report includes several public comments within it. Those comments have not arisen any new information or any new impacts associated with the project that aren't adequately addressed by the project mitigated negative declaration, the staff report, and the project conditions of approval. The initial study was reviewed was circulated for a period of over 30 days, from May 31st to July 1st, and include potential impacts identified to air quality, biology, cultural resources, hydrology and water quality, noise, traffic, travel, cultural resources, utilities, and service systems. All of those impacts have been adequately mitigated to levels of lessened significance with both standard mitigation measures and conditions of approval, but also unique mitigation measures and conditions of approval that are focused solely and specifically on this proposed project. I want to highlight some of the key mitigation measures that are included in conditions of approval that weren't discussed within the presentation that I think will be important both for to ensure the planning commission that this project will be compatible with the neighborhood as well as comply with the county's standards. The county's code related to low-intensity camps requires a 100-foot buffer around an entire property, but allows a planning agency to determine whether or not same practical effect is provided through screening, walls, fences, et cetera. Through the review of this process, staff did identify that the same practical effect was provided. We were looking at the events, and so a wooden fence was required at the nearest property line. Because there were the events that may not be required, but we are requiring that they have a 100-foot setback for all overnight camping facilities. The only building that would encroach within that 100-foot setback is a proposed cafe. The residence is approximately 80 feet, but again, not really subject to this use permit. We have restriction on hours of operation for the craft school from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There is a cap on the capacity of the craft school from 40 campers and 10 employees maximum. They are required for traffic protection to provide a left-hand turn lane going eastbound on Wolf Road, to provide signage going westbound that shows that that driveway is there. There's an existing sign currently showing the left-hand turn to the former Montessori School, and this new sign will show both driveways. They're required to maintain site distance to ensure safety in exiting, entering the site, and then they're also required to pay the traffic impact mitigation fee. For fire safety, the applicant is required to prepare an evacuation plan in working with the office of the county fire marshal. They're required to provide defensive space pursuant to Public Resources Code 4290 and 4291, and then also they have onsite water storage and a hydrant system that would serve for fire protection. The applicant has provided a complete drainage or a final drainage plan is required to document similar to their preliminary drainage plan that the site can accommodate all future storm water at pre-project levels as a result of the new impervious surfaces added to the site. Those features are shown on the site plan. They're required to get a stormwater pollution prevention plan and a standard national pollution discharge elimination permit. The applicant, the mitigation management conditions do provide for protection of onsite resources, both environmental and cultural. Those resources are required to be mapped as environmentally sensitive areas, would not allow further encroachment of those resources without the approval of a management plan, as previously mentioned. They're required to get a dust control plan because their site is over one acre, and that includes soils testing to ensure that any natural clearing of asbestos is managed properly consistent with state and federal requirements. There's a condition of approval that requires no parking in the public right-of-way or in any right-of-way or on the onsite roads. And then there are there's also a condition of approval that restricts parking on undeveloped areas. This was developed a little bit for the events because there were conditions related to overflow parking, but staff felt it pertinent to remain those conditions of approval to ensure that, you know, people aren't parking on dry grass. I mentioned this previously, but I just want to stress the updated condition of approval that does not authorize events by this permit. It does actually require that the construction staging area, which was originally proposed near the events area, be moved at least 50 feet from the property line to help with neighborhood compatibility. It requires a Class II well permitting for the septic system from environmental health, and then environmental health oversight of any food facilities onsite. So through the staff report and as provided today, staff has found that this project can clearly comply with the county's camping regulations as a low-intensity camp craft school. The manager plans are appropriate documents to help define and mitigate for any potential impacts to these resources. The petition for exceptions is supported by both the fire department as well as the Department of Public Works, and then it's also consistent with several general plan policies as shown on pages 32 through 34 of your staff report. So with that, staff would recommend that the planning commission, after reviewing, considering the proposed project, taking public testimony, that the planning commission adopt the proposed mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, making findings A through D, to approve both management plans, making findings specific A and B for both of them, to approve the petition for exceptions, making findings A through E, and finally, to approve the proposed conditional approval as modified, making findings A through K for the low-intensity camp portion only. Staff would note if the planning commission would desire to approve the project, that when taking action, that you reflect that that action does not include events. So with that, staff concludes his staff report and am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tyler. Haven't lost your touch, although your voice may disagree. Okay, prior to, I'm going to ask before we get into that, first of all, Commissioner Duncan has an announcement to make, but I'd also ask if the applicant would like to speak prior to us asking questions. So with that, Commissioner Duncan first?
For the record, I'd like to disclose that I did do a site visit on Tuesday, the 23rd, accompanied by Supervisor Schofield.
Thank you, Commissioner. So if the applicant would like to address the commission at this time, we'd be more than happy to hear from you. And please give us your names and so.
I'm Leslie Barbazette. This is Jay Morgan.
Leslie, would you get into the mic there would be great.
Okay, can you hear me now? Hello?
There you go.
Is that good? I'm going to pull this up on my computer as well. Okay, well, as I said, I'm Leslie Barbazette, and this is Jay Morgan, and we are here to present Wolf Craft School and Collective. Thank you for having us and excited to see all the people here. So next slide. So I wanted to start with what is a craft school? A craft school is a place for the community to come together to learn handcraft skills from knitting and weaving to woodworking and pottery. There are many craft schools on the East Coast and in the South, including Penland in North Carolina, Haystack in Maine, Aramont in Tennessee, and Peters Valley in New Jersey. These schools offer an immersive experience for students with room and board during classes. Our mission is to provide a transformative experience that combines creative learning, a natural setting, and community connection. Our world is so focused on technology, and many people spend their days and nights looking at screens. Unplugging to learn a new skill like pottery where you're immersed in clay provides a mindset shift that offers rest and rejuvenation from technology. This experience can foster a deeper appreciation for the value of handmade goods, the importance of craftsmanship, the joy of creating something with your own two hands, and a sense of community. Wolf Craft School will not have a standing faculty. Our instructors will include studio artists and expert craftspeople, as well as teachers from colleges and universities. Our students will be a mix of the local community members and out-of-town guests staying in tent cabins or elsewhere in the community. All students will have the opportunity to enjoy meals on the land, and classes will arrange from a few hours to a few days in length. Our goal for this, our goal is for this to be a thriving spot for the community as we plan to host local creative clubs and guilds like Knit Nights. We will offer memberships at a sliding scale so those who want to join can. Next slide. So why aren't you building in a craft school? Well, both Jay and I are avid learners and take a lot of classes. Each year, I take classes in the fall, and I learn a new craft like stained glass, broom making ceramics, and then I make that craft for my friends and family for the holidays. Jay is a blacksmith and a metal fabricator and has been making knives for several years. And like many people in 2020, we were reflecting on what the rest of our lives were going to look like. I worked in the fashion industry for two decades, and I didn't really see myself designing and producing clothes and accessories in my 60s. Jay was a graphic designer and art director before focusing on handcraft full-time. So we're dedicated to learning and craft and bringing that experience to Grass Valley, where we plan to spend the rest of our lives. Next slide. So why Grass Valley? Well, my ancestors settled here in 1853, and many of my generations, many generations of my family lived here. There's a picture of Isabel Emily Ahern. She was born in 1863. She's my great-great-grandmother and was one of nine children born and raised in Grass Valley, as was her husband, Thomas. And when my family settled here, they opened the Fahy Quartz Mine just south of downtown Grass Valley. And my great-grandmother and her husband Ralph Olson ran the Bret Hart Inn in the 1950s. So when we were looking for a home for the school and what kind of community we wanted to be part of, Grass Valley was top of the list. So these are a lot of the details that Tyler did in his very thorough presentation. So this is the address, and the school is a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), and Wolf Craft Collective, so Wolf Craft School is the nonprofit, and then Wolf Craft Collective is the nonprofit or the for-profit side of the business. So like when we sell the students' work and things like that, that'll be the for-profit side. We anticipate having between four and 10 employees and a total of 40 students with 26 overnight spots and 13 day spots. The student age minimum is 16 years old, and to stay overnight, you need to be 18 or with an adult. Our classrooms in Phase One will have three classrooms, and Phase Two will add two more. Classrooms will vary in length, as I said, from weekly classes that are a few hours long to one to two days on the weekends to week-long experiences. The class sizes will be kept small, from 10 to 12 students per class. And then for amenities, we're going to be growing web garden to grow vegetables for meals, chickens for eggs, alpacas and sheep for wool, and goats to keep the grass tidy. A food truck for student meals and possibly a cafe at a later phase. And then for lodging, we'll have safari tent cabins on raised platforms, along with more permanent cabins at a later stage. And then a general store for materials and a gallery to sell students' work. The classes we're going to offer, the crafts we're going to offer are pottery, blacksmithing, woodworking, fiber arts like weaving, spinning, and knitting, and many more. Starting with fiber arts, I'm very excited about the sheep-to-sweater or alpaca-to-sweater classes. So we're going to be offering classes on the best sheep or alpaca breeds for soft yarn and how to process their fiber, spin it, and then knit it or crochet it to make a sweater. So these alpacas listed shown here are from Mustang Valley Ranch. Their owner Catherine is in the audience. And so Catherine and Greg had 20 alpacas and didn't really know what to do with the fiber, and so I bought the fiber from them. I got it spun. I sell the yarn now, and then I knit it, and then I made these this sweater, and I sell that kit. So that's also an example of the for-profit side of the business. We'll offer classes on the best plants for to grow for natural dyeing and how to use food waste and bugs to naturally dye fiber, also how to grow flax and turn it into linen. We'll be offering pottery ceramics, so wheel throwing as well as hand-building classes. Woodworking, so you know, an example of that would be making Woodworking, so you know, an example of that would be making outdoor furniture from easily accessible wood, carving wood to make spoons and utensils. For blacksmithing, forging blades and making carbon steel knives, forging steel to make pliers, bottle openers, and other tools for cooking or working on the land. And then general crafts, so just various classes in many disciplines, from woodblock printing, broommaking, koki damas, which is wrapping plant root balls, stained glass, jewelry making, shoemaking. And then permaculture and edible gardens. We plan to grow some of the food that we serve to the students and offer classes focused on permaculture, keeping chickens and ducks, and companion gardening. So Phase One, most of the buildings are not visible from the road. This is the, this is the view of the barn, the ceramic studio, the office and tent cabins from across the street. Two studios are nestled among the trees and will house all the disciplines other than ceramics during Phase One. These studios overlook the large pond at the bottom of the property, and they're not visible from the road. In Phase Two, these will be the general classroom and the fiber arts studio. Nine platform, platforms with canvas tents that include a bed and bathroom with parking underneath the platforms, and then four platforms with beds and a shared bathroom. This is a view of the ceramic studio and the barn, so Phase One will include a ceramic studio with pottery wheels and tables for handbuilding, and the barn will house our alpacas, sheeps, and goats. And then for meals and downtime, we'll provide meals to the students, not to the public, through a food truck in Phase One, and if successful, we may build a commercial kitchen and cafe in Phase Three. And when not in class, students can relax in hammocks in designated chairs spaces, enjoy meals, and movie nights together. So for later phases, after we're up and running, we'll continue to learn and adapt as we grow, and we hope to add two additional studios for blacksmithing and woodworking, transition some of the tent cabins to permanent cabins for more comfort during harsher weather, transition from a food truck to a commercial kitchen and cafe for students only. So after hearing concerns from our neighbors about traffic and noise and safety, we've removed events from the use permit application. We want to be good neighbors, and we've reached out to all of our adjacent neighbors, inviting them to tour the property and learn more about the plans for the school. At a recent community pancake breakfast, we met several neighbors, discussed our plans, and shared that we've removed events from the application. And most of our adjacent neighbors are excited about the school, and the ones closest who might be most impacted by any potential noise are in support. So here's just a dense picture of Wolf Craft timeline to date. So we bought the property in 2020, and May 2021, we did the pre-application review with Nevada County Heads. And then from June 2021 to 2023, we did a cultural assessment, biological inventory, management plans, traffic analysis, noise analysis, light analysis, onsite wastewater report, and drainage analysis. We first submitted the use permit application in June of 2023, and we got 22 pages of notes from the county in July of that year. It took us about six months to address all those concerns, and we resubmitted in December, and then we got four pages of notes. We resubmitted in March, and then we finally got approved in May. So between, while we were in the whole process, we met with Nevada County Development, where we met with all the county heads again, and reviewed our application. We completed the items from the county. We did technical studies and reports. We finished the project design, and we coordinated with the fire department. We had the fire marshal out to the land. We worked with NID, the tribal members, and county staff. And October 11th of 2023, we did, we presented at the South County MAC meeting, as we did last night, and we received positive feedback from the meeting in 2023. And now we are in June of 2024, the planning department published the sequodoc and informed the neighbors in July 2024, the second MAC meeting, and then this meeting. So in conclusion, our hope is to add to the arts in Nevada County by bringing a community-oriented craft school to Wolf Road. We believe that will add value to the community through job creation and by bringing visitors to the area who will support local businesses. We want to be a gathering place to learn new handcraft skills and a place to put down your phone. We are committed to using this land for agriculture and ag-adjacent purposes by offering classes that will help the farming community, from what to do with your animal fiber to how to make tools for growing food and working the land. We will live at and operate the school. We are committed to being good neighbors, and we've been giving tours to any neighbors that are interested, and will hope to host neighbors on a regular basis to bring the community closer. We've met many neighbors who have lived here for over 30 years and never met each other. So let's change that with regular neighbor nights. We've demonstrated that we are taking our neighbors' legitimate concerns about noise, traffic, and safety seriously by dropping events from our use permit application. We're investing in this community, and we'll continue to operate with respect for it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Leslie and Jay. Okay. In fairness to the public, I think we'll hold back. I'll ask the commissioners if they have any quick questions on maybe technical issues or questions of that nature, and then we'll hear from the public and come back and ask more questions if we'd like. So this is a District Two project, so Commissioner Duncan, if you'd like to start?
Just one. Thank you, Tyler. That was a thorough report. I understood what you were putting out there. On the definition of low-intensity camp, I didn't see anything in there about duration, except for individual stays. As proposed, this is a year-round, fully occupied campground.
Correct.
Okay, and that's sort of ancillary to the fact that they want to have classrooms, and so they needed lodging, so that's where the campground came about.
Correct, yes. To try and fit it into the county's codes, both the social gathering place, community meeting facility, and the low-intensity camps definitions were those that were the closest fitting to what they're proposing.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Garst?
I just wanted to get some clarification on the cafe. I think the name might be a little bit misleading. Are you planning on selling food to campers or just serving them as part of their stay?
Well, I think that we'll probably have inclusive items, and then if they want to buy additional items, they can do that.
And that will just be for campers on site, not for general public?
Exactly.
Okay. And then I wanted to ask about the encroachment into the riparian habitat setbacks for the Musda. There's kind of this arc in the Musda outline that I'm assuming came from the existing well setback at one point?
That's correct.
Which seems to be, is being removed, so that 100-foot setback would no longer apply?
Yeah, so with the events going away, the septic will shrink because the septic design is currently for 150 people, and now it only needs to be for 50 people. So it will get a lot smaller. We are hoping, once it gets smaller, that maybe we can save that well, because we would like to keep it if possible. If we can't, then yeah, we'll have to abandon that well.
I think my concern is more about the Musda encroaching into the riparian habitat setbacks. Scaling it to the map, it was about a 25-foot encroachment at the widest part. And I guess I just, for planning, I just had a, was wondering how often we grant setback easement or setback reductions from water courses or water features?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Garst, quite frequently, typically a management plan is an administrative process, and many projects require those. A lot of times, it might be a cannabis project as an administrative project, or just their house might require it, depending on the size of the property. The riparian area does have a 100-foot setback, and so it's not that they're actually encroaching into the riparian area, they're encroaching to the setback.
And then I just wanted to verify that the length of time that employees will be living in these proposed tents will be less than 30 days?
That's my understanding, but I don't know that we have a specific condition that states that.
Because it doesn't seem to be appropriate for longer stays than that. And then, those were, that's it?
Thank you. Commissioner McAtier?
Well, I think I have a number of questions, but I think I'd like to hear from the public.
Okay. I have one for Tyler or Leslie. The, did the South County MAC present a formal recommendation as Supervisor Schofield?
Mr. Chair, they did not. They provided some feedback on specific things, let the public kind of provide some comments, but this project has gone to the MAC two occasions, and the last one was last night, and they didn't provide any specific recommendation, no. And I actually spoke with the staff, and that was at the direction of the supervisor.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we will open the public hearing on this particular item on the agenda, so if you would like to speak on this item, you can line up maybe in groups of four or five. As the line dwindles down, if there's more to speak, you can keep the line going, but please approach the podium, give us your name and address, and start your three minutes.
My name is Sherry Fogarty.
Please speak clearly into the microphone.
Thank you. Sherry Fogarty, 21380 Cameron Way. And, am I not close enough? Sorry. Sorry. I am strongly opposed to this project. You know, basically, it seems like they're bringing a tent motel and transits into our neighborhood, and we're a residential ag neighborhood, and we have a lot of seniors, myself included, and I'm not comfortable with all these people camping and tenting on land that's residential and ag. You know, if their classes don't work the way they want them to, there's nothing to stop them from making this into an Airbnb or short or long-term housing, and there's no reason that they can't, without a special use permit, teach classes on their property and have people eat and stay and shop elsewhere in our community, which is of benefit to the greater community. You know, we're just on the other side of Wolf Creek, and people go down to the creek, and they're going to go through private properties to do that, and I am not comfortable with all these people, 40, 50, whatever it is, being in our residential ag neighborhood. And I don't understand how this project could be considered, because my understanding is the Higgins Plan said nothing commercial past Jennifer Drive, and this is past Jennifer Drive. So I just want to ask you to please protect our property and our way of life and our residential and ag land and say no to this use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Yeah, folks, if you, yeah, if you'd please refrain from reacting and clapping, we'd appreciate it. If you'd like to show your appreciation, you can kind of wave your fingers.
I am Philip Rubauer. I live 22448 Jennifer Drive. At the first page that was on when we came in, it showed the pond. If that camera panned slightly over, my house would have been visible. I have lived in that house the entirety of my life. To hear that all local people that are in close proximity support it is crazy. The fact that they were pressured to remove the event shows how out of support this was, and the fact that it happened till last minute shows how little notification the community has had to gather and rally and try to oppose this. There is no reason that a school would need this type of onsite living accommodations. If the school was not there, the board would not approve this density in this type of neighborhood, along with a restaurant on site. And it feels really just ridiculous that a school would allow enough leeway to have this happen. There is nothing in place to safeguard this density of people from roaming into other people's property, especially with it so close to ours. We have not had this density. This is unprecedented building in this area, and I think that past what a person's money is willing to buy, there is no reason it should pass. This is clearly done for their own profit, and they could do this elsewhere if they truly felt passionate about this. But in a residential area with this strict regulation, it should never have even been considered. And I would really like you guys to spend the time to review this. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip.
My name is George Gregory. I live at 10954 Wolf Road. And for the record, I oppose this plan mostly because it'll destroy the main reason I moved here 32 years ago. This property of mine is by Wolf Creek, and this place has always been a respite for me, a place of peace to rejuvenate myself from my work as a hospice nurse, a sanctuary, if you will, a place of peace where I could block out the world and enjoy nature and feel so relaxed that I didn't need to even lock my doors at night. I right now have a reasonable expectation that no one uninvited will show up in my front lawn. Could I still have that expectation after this plan gets approved? I doubt it. The noise also of the building, of the degrading, of building a house, a barn, four classrooms, five, whatever they are, 19 tent sites, a cafe, places to park, drilling a well, and not to mention the crowd of people that will be living above me, will all challenge my peace, make it probably very hard to find peace in my place. But it doesn't stop there. That's just during the day. The plan continues to challenge my peace at night. The applicant wants people to stay overnight, up to 26 people, as young as 18, in tents, no less. Now, if I can remember back that far as a youth, I was prone to explore at that time and had the tendency to wander and really occasionally break the rules, like disobeying no trespassing signs. Now, if you include alcohol, which they plan to do, it also intensifies the risk exponentially. I know that I don't give, and they won't give, 18-year-olds alcohol, but that never stopped me from getting it. So I can no longer have that reasonable expectation that no one uninvited will show up in my front lawn. Some will wander, looking for the access to Wolf Creek. I think Jay and Leslie are naive to think that they can stop this. So to summarize, it appears to me that Leslie loves our peaceful neighborhood so much, she wants to share it with the world and to do crafts, fulfilling her dream while destroying mine and my wife's. A peaceful place to live out our lives. Please do not approve this plan. There are a multitude, a multitude of elderly couples that have this same plan to live out their last years, and this will negatively affect it. Thank you.
Thank you, George. The scorekeeper didn't start the clock on that one. Tyler, you're going to own up to that?
I'm on the job.
Oh. Going into overtime.
Hi, my name is Sally Bootyette, and my place is 10418 Wolf Road. I am vehemently opposed to this project. I'm a quarter mile away from the proposed craft center between the center and Highway 49. A quick history, I fell in love with the area decades ago and always dreamed of living here. I had my own business as a natural products broker, and this was part of my territory and serviced my accounts on a regular basis, always dreaming of living here. I have four grown children, three daughters, and my son. Two of my daughters have their husbands, and four of my grandchildren living down the hill about 30 minutes away. My son became gravely ill and was in and out of the hospital on multiple machines when he was home, and I gave up my business to care for him. My world flipped on its head in October of 2020, when I lost- My world flipped on its head in October of 2020, when I lost him, watched him take his last breath, waiting for paramedics. I was devastated. I found a job in West Roseville, where I still work full-time. I moved to an ADU on a twenty-acre ranch below North Auburn, grieving and regrouping. I got pre-approved and started shopping, found my place, and it checked all my boxes. Sorry. In the country, zoned, Ag Ten, neighbors all around, living the same type of lifestyle I wanted, could have my horses in such incredible beauty, wildlife all around, Wolf Creek, direct commute to work, and end up having the most wonderful neighbors one could ask for. In short, my sanctuary. I did not anticipate a commercial project being proposed in the neighborhood, in the middle of us, a quarter mile away, and the disruption of our lifestyle we all wanted. I am glad the event aspect is off the table, but that still leaves the tent cabins, tent platforms, cafe, I know the craft classrooms, and all necessary for that. Maybe that, sorry, maybe the classes will be over by six, but that still leaves the camping. No. The potential noise, lights, music if campers choose, et cetera. I did not and do not want a campground essentially next a door. I know traffic issues will be discussed by others, and I don't want to be redundant. But where I live, all traffic is going to be right by me. I know that the traffic, increased traffic, and potential accidents, and Wolf Road is known for its fatal accidents, and most of the traffic, as I said, would go right by me. What if an accident happens and takes out my fence? My horses spooked and head for forty-nine. They will be killed. And the construction traffic will also go by me. I know Leslie stated this is her dream, but my place is my dream. What makes her dream more valid than mine? Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you. Jeanne Gregory, 10954 Wolf Road, George Gregory's wife. We bought our piece of property, our piece of paradise, thirty-two years ago. My concerns include safety, noise of construction, and late-night parties. I know they say that the construction is temporary, but seven years to me is a lifetime. I don't know how much longer I will really live. So noise of construction is a huge concern of mine, day in and day out, seven AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, is on the proposal. So what does temporary mean? That is not temporary to me. First, this is, has nothing to do with personalities, nice neighbors, nice commissioners, or nice planners. This has to do with my peace, my reasonable expectation, and I think the system has failed us because we, the neighbors, were notified so late. What about us getting mitigated at the outset, in 2021? How about bring it to us in 2021 and talk about all these factors? Three weeks, we have to figure out how to be engineers, water engineers, learn about the birds and everything else that goes with it. I, myself, looked at Wolf Road. It is so dangerous. My son was in an accident on Wolf Road on Christmas Eve. I went ahead and looked at some of the statistics, because I know right in front, there was a death, her name was Ronnie Beam, right in front of my house. And so the, where this property is, is right next door to my driveway. I'm the next driveway down, and this turn, it's a speedway for the youngsters. Let me tell you, they don't follow forty-five. It's a highway. They love the challenge of driving around it. And so we've had three fatal accidents, one right in front of my house and another helicopter. I don't know what happened to her. So for me, the, the traffic is just very dangerous, and I don't understand why in their office they're going to have bicycles, because you don't want bicycles on Wolf Road. We might want to think about being good neighbors, let's get bike lanes and make things safer for our neighbors, not more dangerous. The Ag Ten, I just, can you throw me on my phone? But I looked on the UC Davis website, and it, it specifically talks about what county planners have a challenge. They bear, the fifty-eight counties in California bear the primary responsibility for permitting and regulating agritourism operations on agricultural land within their boundaries. The county-
...has often struggled. So anyways, it's, the point being, can I just finish in a little?
You, you could go ahead and finish, make it quick, though. You're out of time.
Okay. So on their website, this specifically talks about that the planner, this incumbent, that things like this are supplemental, not primary, activity on a commercial farmer ranch, and that the agricultural land is preserved for ag uses. Regulations must ensure that agricultural production and local residents are not adversely affected by this tourism. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeanne. Anyone else?
Hello. I'm Felicia Tracy. My family purchased our hundred-acre ranch on Dukens Road, 16605, in nineteen forty-two. We've had sheep, cattle, and primarily horses all that time, and that continues to this day. I wrote a letter to Mr. Barryton earlier on with lots of questions about the advisability of this. My background is not just agriculture and being a Nevada Countyan, but also having a master's degree from Stanford in art education, and being a teacher in both public and private schools. I am very much for anything that stimulates the art community. I think particularly in this day of, of technology and everybody in a hurry and so on, it's very important that we have a balance. That's one reason why I taught horsemanship at our ranch for over forty years, nearly forty years, as my main business, and I've just retired from that. I think this needs to be balanced. I think that they have addressed the main issue that I was concerned about, which was the event center with the big events and the weddings. That has been taken out. So now we're dealing with a much smaller thing. And I've taught in boarding schools long enough to know that it is a very important thing in many, many people's lives to experience working together in the arts like this. My main concern and question is, if you're going to have people spending the night, you need to have some sort of a kitchen food service set up, because food trucks aren't necessarily going to always be available. And growing your own food and everything, I've spent this week canning for my vegetable garden. It is, it is a big project, and you need to have a small commercial kitchen added to that if you're going to have people live there. Food service is vital to everybody's happiness and well-being. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Felicia.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Rich Rogers. I live at 23861 Lakeview Court, just across the street, over on the Comby side. Actually, deeply respect my neighbors and their concerns for changes, but I have a different perspective on this. I'm a big fan of the project. In context, I've visited very similar craft schools in North Carolina, where my family's from. And I can tell you that each one of these, I've been to Penn Coast, I've been to ones, excuse me, I have a little cold, so, I've been to the ones in Asheville area, and each one is an absolute gem of those communities. And I can tell you that there are basically two types of rural communities back where my family comes from, the ones that welcome projects like this, and the ones that are dying. And if you go to Canton, where my family's from, you see mostly places where elderly people used to live, have passed away, and houses are boarded up. So things that bring a sense of community, maintain our rural values. This is a good example of the kinds of things that I want to have in my neighborhood. So although I do deeply respect my neighbors' concerns, you know, I hope that, I hope that over time, the commission can find a way to make this acceptable use possible in a way that does work for them, and I hope that they'll get a chance to come around and see what these things look like when they work, because they do work very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Hi. My name is Jennifer, Jennifer Simning, and I live on 14957 Cole Road. I didn't actually expect to speak today. I'm a third-generation Napa, and so I've seen development happen in our community. I obviously live in Grass Valley right now. It started small, and it got really big, and none of my family live in Napa anymore, because it's very busy there with tourists. I moved to Santa Rosa, and they've gone through a lot of development. So I moved up to Grass Valley, because I ride horses, wanted to be in nature, wanted the laid-back environment. So my concern is that once you approve a development like this, sometimes it opens the door to other developments and other investments, investors to come into the area when they see something doing so well. The reason why I'm up here today is because I was listening to what he had to say, and then the applicants here, and I'm concerned about the proposal of how many people are going to be on the premises. He said ten campers and ten employees, or I'm sorry, forty people, ten camps. But she also had mentioned that there would be people attending that were not necessarily staying there, that they would be off-premises, and that she would be offering memberships. So my concern is that this is going to evolve into a greater amount of people coming to this location. It is an ag zone area. It is the reason why I came here. So I'm going to have to say I oppose it. It's a beautiful plan. I just don't want it in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
My name is Paul Carpenter. I live at 22336 Jennifer Drive. Our property, our ten-point-two-acre piece of property, butts theirs by about three hundred feet on the back, on their, back of their property. I support the project. I've met, we bought our property in, in July of two thousand twenty, so we've been there about the same time these guys have. It was within a few months that we had bought the property, that we were just out there in that backend and just checking it out, out there, and there was a trailer up there, and Jay and Leslie must have seen us, so they came down and met with us, and they explained what their dream was for that property in 2020. And, and so we kind of had an idea of what was coming. I knew that there was a lot of hoops that they would have to jump through to realize that. I wasn't sure if it required a zoning change. It didn't. But it did require a conditional use, which is very thoroughly vetted by, by county staff, obviously. You did a great job, Tyler, of going through that. It was very, there's, there's a lot of people commenting on this. They have continuously changed their plans to meet the county's objectives, to meet it fit within the conditional use. We did have expressed to them our concern of the events and the weddings that was portrayed in the plan originally, and they had told us that, well, that's not critical to our plan, and we can drop that if we need to. I'm glad to see that they've agreed to do that. That was one thing I stated in my letter, my letter of support for the project, that, that, you know, we thought that that may be hard to, 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 to control, the noise or the bands or the music and the parties, whatever it would have. So I appreciate that they've taken that out, and they don't need to do that. Personally, I, I would look forward someday being able to do some of the metallurgy and participate in some of their crafts. We have a lot of land, it's hard land to work, and I need some metal tools. So that, I think that's great. I think the community is great, the community aspect of it. I thought traffic would be a big, big concern. They've reduced the size of it, it'll be less traffic. It's nothing like the traffic occurring on the intersection of forty-nine and Comby and Wolf Road, and the developments occurring there. It's minuscule compared to the current plans that are going to be developed down there. To me, it's not a great concern. The left turn lane was obvious. I thought that, that was going to happen, and I'm glad to see that that's in there. Anyway, I support the plan. I think they've done a great job. County staff has met with them many, many times. They've revised their plans many, many times to fit within it. They've met the criteria. I really think that it should be approved. I look forward to it being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Hello. My name is Sally Mayock. I live at 23255 Meyer Ravine Road, and as a species, food, water, and art. I think the thing we invented after fire was art, and it brings so much to people's lives and to people's souls. And yes, we've lost a whole lot of that. There's currently, the Montessori school closed. They did very little with the property. The traffic was immense. There's also Pleasant Ridge School. Again, they've done very little with the property. The traffic is immense. There's a feed store right next to Pleasant Ridge School. There used to be a pottery studio at Best Gas, at the corner there, Wolf and forty-nine. They went out of business. What you are suggesting with your property, I'm thrilled to have anyone do this kind of land use that takes all of the fire danger out of the picture for this big of a chunk. I'm thrilled about. Having people over age eighteen that are going to come and take classes that they've paid money for, I don't really see how you would be able to allow, just as being there yourselves, out-of-control behavior. I don't think that would be any part of what would be going on. It's a school. The Montessori kids didn't run wild and tear up the creek either. We need to bring new business. We need to bring businesses like this that are bringing to the community things that feed the soul as well as income. You, you could quite possibly, you know, make the next Michelangelo, anybody that you inspire through art. And we have plenty of other, we have music camps, we have farm camps, we have other horse camps. And yeah, it's a little bit of noise. You're talking about a very long build-out period, and as somebody who's lived here for thirty years, the chainsaw start at six AM and they stop at six PM. You know, we do have noise mitigation laws. Yes, construction's a problem. It, it always is, but we need to build things like this for our community.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Steve Buck. I live at 22211 Jennifer Drive. Our property is located just directly behind-
We share a property line with them, and we heard a lot of what was going on, took the time to talk to Jay and Leslie, to find out what was really going on, because there's a lot of rumors that, I wasn't sure that was really real. So we took a little time, and they spent a lot of time with us, went over the project. We also had a concern about large events going on there, and we discussed that with them, and they took that to heart, took that out of their proposal, addressed pretty much all the concerns we had. We gained a lot of information just by having that conversation and taking the time to talk to them. I, I do look forward to what they're doing there. I'm a part- I may participate in some of that. I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, we support the proposal. With respect to my neighbors, that's just my opinion on the, on the subject, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And folks, just a reminder, if you'll speak a little clearer and closer to the microphone, it would probably be helpful.
All right, I'm gonna give it a try. I am not used to speaking to adults. I'm used to speaking to kids. My name is Lisa Ward. I live at 21445 Sunnyside Lane. I've lived up here since 1992. I had not planned to talk today. But, one of the things that this project brought to mind to me is that all of our young generation coming through the schools know nothing of these textiles, these tools. And I think it's important that we learn these things. It's important that these traditions, these skills carry on to the next generation, or we lose them. I see kids going through school systems, all being pushed towards college, and not with any other trade schools. Go to college, go to college, go to college. That's great, but that's not for all of them, and we're losing that. This is the opportunity for us to give these trades a chance, in, in our community, in our, our society. The other aspect that I have here, yes, there's traffic, but I've seen more traffic on Wolf Road from the communities being built up off of Route Dugan and Wolf and Garden Bar. There's communities growing, there's traffic growing. This school is no more traffic than the Montessori or Pleasant Ridge when it was still doing. It's not that, it's not that much more. It's not like they're going to have parents dropping them off every morning. I also think that the fire safety, their plans for the area is an improvement, not a, not, I can't even think of the words, is not a destruction, it's an improvement. Now, my only complaint is my grandson, who heard that they are gonna teach woodshop, was disappointed that he has to wait until he's 16. But, I think this is great, and I think this is an awesome idea. Thanks.
My name is Celia Culver. I live at 21523 Cameron Way. That's just up the creek from their property. I don't have a problem with any individual people. I mostly have a problem, I think, with the governing bodies in the county. I've lived here since 1968, and even when I was a mere child in 19, in 1968, I see now in retrospect that the counties, you know, changed zoning laws for sites of parcels and stuff like that to make it where our community was. Is it still working? Yeah. That our community that was mostly ranches, big ranches and small ranches, and the ranchers helped each other up and down the road, and across the road, and across the highway, do what we did, you know, whether we were raising cattle, sheep, pigs, all of the above, horses. I remember when Felicia's mom, Mr. and Mrs. Shapps ran that property when she was younger, and Mrs. Shapps could ride her buggy and her horse all the way down Dugan Road, all the way out to Wolf Road, to the bridge where we live. And nobody could do that today, even on a bicycle or anything else, because it's too dangerous. So, that goes back to, you know, the county allowing all kinds of projects, like whether it's this project, or a winery, or something else that they've tucked back in on dirt roads that didn't used to have names, and when we used to live in roots and boxes, and nobody knew the dirt road past, you know, the corner of Wolf and Garden Bar, didn't have a name, you know, but we all knew where it was, because we knew where our neighbors were. And when the county, back in those days, started manipulating and changing and allowing the acres to be smaller and the population to grow bigger and bigger and bigger, that's when we started to lose our community. And this is just another example of how our community uses special use permit to allow something that's not farming, or ranching, or agriculture, truly agriculture, to come into the community. And like I said, I'm not opposed to them at all. I just think that there's a place for their school, and it's not in the South Counties. And it's been a long time since the planning commissioner, the planning department, or the board of supervisors have had that in their sights about the South County being a rural community. They wanna let it be like Grass Valley. And that's the other part, oh, I'm done, is roads. They don't take care of our roads.
Hi there. My name is A.J. Johnson. I live at 12681 Wolf Road. I'm opposed, I'm opposed to this project for several reasons, and I understand the Nevada County Land Use and Development Code cannot cover every iteration of AG land use. That's why Nevada County Development Use Permits are, exist. And it's the responsibility of commissioners up here today to govern the development and use permits to adhere to the intent of the code, which is not for non-agricultural-related commercial operations. This project is non-agricultural-based. Beautiful sales pitch by Leslie, absolutely beautiful. Penland, by the way, Penland in North Carolina, they charge $1,100 for four days for their camp. That's for one individual. And if they only get 30 campers, that's say 500 a week. That's 60 grand a month. So, this is a commercial operation. This is for making money. Don't, don't let that slip you by, by the wonderful craft school dressing. The project proposes 25 buildings for a total of 22,242 square feet. That's a half acre of buildings, 15 of which are at least two stories high. Eleven cabins, 450 square feet each, that's 22 by 22, are two-story high, 19 feet tall. That's a two-story cabin with a loft, kitchen, and bathroom, potentially. The picture in the project plan shows you a little tent cabin of less than 12 feet tall, which is very misleading to me. This is not the intent of the code. The intent of the code is to allow for recreational campgrounds and camps of less intensive nature in general, have less need for infrastructure, generate less traffic, have less onsite development uses within the REC or CH districts. This is very important, because you're gonna set a precedence for others to follow. Are the cabins only allowed for craft school attendees? Does the project exclude selling metal, wood, or clay products? Because this can easily be a commercial operation for any of these potential products and an Airbnb campground. This is not the intent of an AG zone parcel. There are no regulatory bodies, bodies that I know of in Nevada County that will ensure the, only craft school attendees are allowed to stay overnight, and no commercial products are produced or sold of a non-agricultural nature. I'm sitting here watching the clock, so sorry. This is certainly not a home business. The project exceeds the code's allowances for home business, such as pottery, craft businesses. Overall, again, this exceeds the intent of the code for AG zone parcels, and if you approve this plan, it will absolutely set precedence for others to follow. Hell, I can build seven cabins on my parcel and generate some Airbnb revenue as well. I can conduct a training class, class on mountain biking, and, you know, that'd be my craft school. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Don Conan. I live at 21001 Conan Hill Drive, a piece of property that I subdivided about 25 years ago, well, I'll take that back, about 45 years ago. And I, when I went to the planning commission, I had this same, same thing. People brought up all kinds of reasons why I couldn't divide my property. And back then, it was a five-acre minimum, and now it's a 10-acre minimum, so parcels are not getting smaller. But I do have a couple of questions. I'd like to welcome you into the neighborhood. You're gonna put in a heck of a lot of plants. You plan on watering those with NID?
Sir, sir, you're addressing the commission. This isn't a question and answer period.
You didn't have a question and answer period.
With the applicant. You can, you can address your questions to the, to the commissioners, and the applicant and/or staff can respond to them after you're finished, when we're finished with public comment. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to know the zoning of 10911 Wolf Road. And that's, was the Montessori school, because I don't believe it's agricultural anymore. I think Sue Horn created that, so they could make that school there. As far as the traffic goes, we've already seen the traffic from the charter school that failed. The other thing is, we need, you know, we need craftsmen in this world. There's, if you'll listen to Mike Rowe, I don't know if you know who that is, but you should. There's 10 million jobs in the United States for craftsmen that can't be filled, because young people don't wanna do that kind of work. Maybe getting involved in woodwork or ironwork would, would interest them, and getting into some very highly-paid crafts. Also, I hear people talking about wandering around, people out wandering around. I haven't noticed that where I live, but my father-in-law once told me that good fences make good neighbors. So, I guess what, you know, you might wanna do is put up a really good fence, because you don't want people wandering around on your property. I'm, I'm in favor of the project, absolutely. It, it's, it's a good project. People wanna keep this county the same as it always was. I ran into it 45 years ago. The Nesters wanted to keep it the same, and things change. And, good luck to you, and I hope you, I hope you get approval of the project. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Robin Horn. I live at 12114 Wolf Road, and I oppose this project in its entirety. The applicant is correct on one point, that the rural agricultural way of life is disappearing in our community. It is due to projects like this being shoehorned into an agricultural area. This project is obviously a commercial development that is inappropriate for the area. Rather than preserving existing open space, it destroys the pastoral character and wildlife habitat. Wildlife cannot navigate solid walls. There is no mitigating the negative impact of this project. The sphere of influence for commercial development stops at Jennifer Drive, and the subject property is obviously outside that boundary. With its proposed commercial Class II public well, a commercial septic system, a commercial cafe, this is a commercial development and not subject to the provisions of a, of a conditional use permit on rural, general ag land. The environmental impact of this commercial development is also deeply troubling. The management proposals for the existing trees and watercourses, along with the extensive grading and paving of the site, will negatively impact our local wildlife, native habitat, and possibly our air quality, groundwater supply, and quality of our groundwater, given the scope of development. Of great concern is the impact of this commercial development on Wolf Road. Wolf Road is a two-lane, winding country road that was never intended to be a major thoroughfare. The volume and speed of traffic have noticeably increased in the past four years. Drivers are increasingly aggressive, tailgating, traveling at speeds far in excess of the posted speed limit, crossing the double-yellow line to pass even on blind curves. Traffic from this proposed development will only exacerbate the existing dangerous conditions. The county has constructive notice of the dangerous conditions on Wolf Road. Approval of this project and the consequential negative effects on Wolf Road traffic may expose the county to civil liability in the event of a serious or fatal incident. After over 20 years of traveling through the area, my dream of buying land and building my home on Wolf Road came to fruition four years ago. I bought land and built my home to enjoy the quiet rural lifestyle offered by the surrounding community. I will fight to defend my right to the quiet enjoyment of my property and to protect my safety while commuting through the area. The applicant commented to me on Nextdoor that she has the right to develop her land. She does not have the right, she has the opportunity. That opportunity is dependent upon whether her existing existential vision complies with zoning and existing land use. Zoning requires a conditional use permit. That is not a permit you obtain by right, it is discretionary, and that discretion lies with you. To permit, to grant this permit would be an abuse of that discretion. There are other, more suitable uses of the subject property that would comply with zoning and be more compatible with.
My name is Tammy Frubauer. I live at 22448 Jennifer Drive. I've lived there since 1985. I oppose the use permit. We moved to the area because it was rural. I have concerns about noise, traffic, increased crime, and the quality of our life on our There, in my mind, there is no reason why there has to be tents and cabins on the property. If the classes stop at 6:00, then the people living in those tents and cabins will have plenty of time to, yes, wander around. The occupants will be transient, coming from their areas. They don't understand the fire danger out where we are. I'm concerned about the light pollution from all the security lights that are on the property. No longer will I be able to go out and watch the stars and watch the meteor showers, because the light pollution coming from the property next door. It's my understanding that if the craft school fails, the use permit remains. So, I could see very easily those cabins and tents terminating to either short- or long-term rentals. I'm really angry that the county is even considering this commercial business in such a rural area. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is John Frubauer. I live at 22448 Jennifer Drive also. I bought this property, 11-acre parcel, in 1985, 39 years ago. I bought this property so that I could enjoy the serenity of rural life. Now that I'm retired, I'm enjoying it even more. All of a sudden, a few weeks ago, I was informed by Nevada County that a big commercial project is scheduled to be plopped down in the middle of this tranquil rural community. Most of my neighbors and I are shot by this project that has been very quietly in the works for over three years. The planning department applies community land use policies and strives to meet the needs of individuals and businesses. It is their goal to protect the environment in needs of individuals and businesses. It is their goal to protect the environment and to ensure that Nevada County remains a desirable place to live, work, and recreate. The planning department would not approve a marijuana dispensary next to an elementary school, nor would it allow a rowdy country western saloon to be built next to a church. It's just not compatible. So does the planning department feel it is okay to allow a large commercial project to be built in the midst of a quiet, peaceful rural community? This is the eleventh hour. The die have already been cast. Three years of mitigation and probably thousands of dollars of fees have been paid. So how can you possibly say no to this project at this point in time? What we know about the will of the people, what we, what about the decades and generations that have enjoyed the peaceful, good life? Do these people desire, deserve any consideration? I think it all boils down to the people.
Good afternoon. My name is Edith Heller. My husband and I live at one one two one two Wolf Road. We have lived here thirty-eight years.
A little closer to the microphone, please. Thank you.
We moved here because of the quiet lifestyle. We raised our son, animals here. I was president of Nevada County Certified Growers Market. I still have my gardens, and I still work my gardens. This is an agricultural zoned area. We do not believe another school that falls, fails is what we need. There are two blacksmith schools in Nevada City. There are two cloth making schools in Grass Valley. There are two in Auburn. There is a summer camp in Nevada City for ceramics. There are two woodcraft classes in Nevada City. We do, do we really need a underfailed school in the area? We had one school, and we all know what happened to that. Straight to pot. They want a variance for the driveway. During the winter months, we know that there's ice and snow, and it makes it into an ice skating rink in the steep driveways. Will this be mitigated? After classes, let's have a drink. Let's have two. Let's go out for dinner. Let's have another drink. Oh, maybe another drink. Oh, now we're gonna drive home down our curvy road. Thank you very much. There's a tree. Oh, I didn't see it. Oh, there's a curve in the road. Oh, where did that deer come from? How many times has this happened on our road? And the road is deteriorating to the point where it's sliding off the side. They want to put up five to six-foot walls surrounding for the sound barriers. These are solid walls. Look in the area. You don't see any solid fencing. How many fawns follow their mothers, raccoons, possum, fox, get around these fences? When I spoke with Leslie, she said they were considering moving the house from one side to the, over to the event side. Would this need a new permit? She wants to have gardens, like she showed in the pictures, and she can sell her garden, garden grow, things that she grows in her garden. She can sell those at the growers' market. There are a lot of stores around here that buy grocery, you know, garden vegetables, and she can sell them there. And this would keep it in the agricultural class.
Good afternoon. My name is Gigi Perez. I live at two two three three six Jennifer Drive. Our property is one of the four properties that border right on the Wolf Cracks Collective, and I'm in support. I love the mission. I think that it's exactly what the community needs. It's art, it's back to nature, it's crafting. I'm very supportive of that. We've lived here for four years. We met Leslie and Jay as soon as they moved in, and they were very upfront about what they wanted to do and their proposal. I truly believe that it is a farm with classes. We have farm animals. We love them. Goats, chickens, rabbits, everything. And I really think it's a farm with classes. And I'm looking forward to being able to take some of those classes, have our grandchildren grow up in that area. I think it's gonna be a benefit to the neighborhood. They're very professional. They've really done their due diligence. I mean, I think bordering the land, all the other things that could be there, all the other buildings or, you know, things that I wouldn't want there. So I'm thrilled. And I really believe it's gonna increase our property value, which is important to us, and I really support it. I also want to say that, you know, I support all of our neighbors that have concerns. We had concerns. We addressed those with Jay and Leslie. We toured the property, and they really reassured us, and they've taken the events and weddings out, which were our main concern. And I really respect all our neighbors. I love the community, and I really hope that if it does go through, that people can come around and support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Okay, anyone else? Folks, it'd probably be best, if you're wishing to speak, to just form a line behind the podium so then we could have kind of an accurate timing here. It'll save a couple of seconds as well. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Linda Monroe, and I live at one zero nine eight four Wolf Road. I oppose this project. I live the next drive over. I've met Leslie and Jay, and they seem to be lovely people. I would like for them to do, I would like for them to successfully create their vision, but I would like it in an alternate location. Although I support more opportunity for building community and supporting the arts in Nevada County, I don't think that this is the, the best location. The scope of the project is very large. It lies in an area of rural residences surrounded by native California oak groves. We're rich in wildlife here. We want to preserve the peaceful country feel. I don't understand why there is so much in the project that buildings, primary residences are on water setback lines. I feel like it's too big a project. My son and I live on Wolf Road, and our property lies in the area of notification by the planning commission. Just three-quarters of a mile from Highway forty-nine, this particular area of Wolf Road is well-traveled by area residents. It's a thoroughfare for those going to town to work and to school. The school bus route travels here. I'm worried about the impact of prolonged construction, particularly constant noise and safety. My son will be attending middle school this year. As a working mom, I'm having to consider my son using the school bus system. I asked the school district if they could stop in front of our drive, and it was not granted. So unfortunately for us, the bus does not stop there. He may need to walk a short stretch of this unsafe windy road without a shoulder or sidewalks. The road is dangerous as it is. To think that there could be years of increased traffic and large trucks navigating our stretch of Wolf Road is incredibly upsetting. So I oppose this project.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Fran Suket. I've lived for thirty-five years at one six eight nine oh Dugans Road, and it's, my location is a half a block from Wolf Road. My first point and a very serious concern that I have is already the heavy existing traffic on Wolf Road, which is a two-lane, winding country road with blind curves. It was never designed to be a commercial thoroughfare. Pedestrians nor bikes cannot use this road. There are no shoulders, or very few to be found. Wolf Road serves as a thoroughfare for residents in Penn Valley, Indian Springs Road, McCourtney Road, Perimeter Road, Lime Kiln, as a shortcut to Highway forty-nine. And I have evidence because they passed my house. When there's an accident on forty-nine at Lime Kiln or at Wolf and Combi, they close forty-nine and they detour the traffic down Lime Kiln, down Dugans, and onto Wolf. It is horrendous. My second point is fire. We all know what fire does to a community, and we live in a very hazardous fire situation. People from outside of the area coming into our location, which is proposed for that, do not have the same care or concerns like residents do, which we try to curtail and take care of. And this is my worry for the residents of Nevada County. And I hope that you take in consideration our safety and our lifestyle in Nevada County. Thank you for hearing me.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Velma Drath. Live at one zero triple five Wolf Road, of course, right across the property, that named over here. I think it is impossible and insane to have a plant like that in our agricultural zoned area, our beautiful, clean areas. They are trying to take our freedom away. This is not acceptable. This project belongs to an industrial area, not our plant, not a planned commercial, not a future commercial plant operation. This is not acceptable. Think about our water, our waterfowl in our ponds, for example, mallards, green-winged teal, buffalo head, Canadian geese. I'm sure Fish and Game would have a say-so about that, too, because one of the few ponds that doesn't have a, a dog running around like mine, for example. Road improvements, grading, for example, that, grading what disaster the school is, or was, I should say, right across my place. No security whatsoever, very dangerous to live in, in my book. Cutting fences in my property to go into the school, old school area, the Montessori school. Road improvements, I should say, the grading, the fencing, there's no existing property on their property there. Strange, strange people running around constantly, obviously, I shouldn't say proudly, giving a damn where they live, don't realize what's going on in our precious neck of the woods over here. The smoke, that's smoke, drinking, drugs. Who knows all the noises around there? Fire hazard, not to mention the dust on the daily basis, day and night. There will be many problems coming. There will be many problems to come, day and night. Not acceptable. I am certainly, I'm not the only, I'm, I'm not the only neighbor, including myself around, who feels this way. I like to have my sanity and somebody else, I'm sure. So don't let them take our freedom away. Thank you. Much appreciated.
Hello. My name is Aaron Sullivan, two one nine one four Cottage Hill Drive. We're about six-tenths of a mile as the crow flies, but maybe about three miles by road, kind of on the backside of the property. My wife and I initially wrote in in opposition of this project, particularly when it had the, the event center. Our main concerns were amplified sound and light pollution. If I'm understanding staff's report on this, all of that has been addressed. No amplified sound, lighting only necessary for root finding, safety, et cetera. And thus, while I'm not gonna go as far as say, we are in support of this, we're just removing our opposition, number one. In the last little time I have remaining, this is an impressive endeavor. It's gonna take a lot of work, not only in terms of if it's approved to construct it, but also to maintain a good relationship with the community, good neighbors, et cetera, because obviously, this is going to invite folks who are not familiar with our area and how we like to spend our time and how quiet it is, and make sure they understand that so that, you know, obviously, if this goes forward, we maintain that good relationship. So best of luck if this is approved. So thank you.
Good afternoon, Commission. My name is Robert Wadman. I live at one one four seven seven Wolf Road. Everyone here has already addressed the concerns about traffic, which has been an issue for over twenty years on that road. My biggest concern is, number one, you're moving the boundary line again. If the boundary for commercial is Jennifer, then that needs to stay. You move it down to Wolf, it'll get moved again, and again, and again. I'm concerned about the conditional use permit. I would like clarification on whether it stays with the property or it's revoked upon the sale of the property. We already have one, and we have to look at three trailers, which have been condemned every time we go around the curve. Many of us here had very dark hair when we moved here. I've lost one. But it doesn't mean that I'm not for progress. I applaud the endeavor. I think it's great. I'm an art teacher. I applaud the arts and the creativity and the knowledge that the students gain, but I don't think it belongs on Wolf Road. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Linda Ramirez, and I live at one two six zero eight Wolf Road. We had the opportunity to meet Leslie and Jay about a week ago, and they reported us as people who were in favor of their project. I think they misunderstood our comments. We are definitely opposed to the project, and many of the reasons stated here are exactly why we feel the same. We are definitely very concerned, as my husband is retired from the fire department, and we know there's mitigation meetings with those folks. But we do live in a very challenged area as far as fire is concerned, and just trying to evacuate, if they've got a full house and the rest of us who are residents there are trying to leave, it's difficult. We went through that evacuation process a couple of times last summer, and it was very difficult to manage the roads, let alone having to think about them evacuating a herd of folks that they have on their property. It's also quite concerning to us that if this does not succeed in a way that they like, are they going to be in a position to perhaps make this school a drug rehab center? Because that's what it looked like to me in the breadth of my experience, though they said that wasn't their plan. It's a very big money-making It's a very big money-making business. I don't think it would fall under their tax-exempt plan like they've presented now, but I do think it's a recourse where they can teach crafts to people and skills to people. We can't expect our youth to grow from what they're offering if they have to be 16 years old to kind of get the exposure. Maybe they need to look into a better location than in our rural community, because I think they could do well to bring it to younger people and present those opportunities to the youth rather than to us old neighbors. Thank you very much, and we definitely are opposed to the project. Sorry.
Thank you.
I have a letter from my neighbor. Could I read it?
You, no, you've already spoken. You can, you can leave the letter with staff, with the clerk.
Usually, we let them read letters for some other party, so that we can hear them. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So to the Commissioner, I'll try to, I'll try to be brief, because obviously, there's only so many issues that non-experts like ourselves, we're not planning commissioners, or Tyler Barrington over here, but there's only so many things we can add. My name is Patrick Fogarty. I live at 21380 Cameron Way. And so I want to just, I want to register my strong opposition to this project, not through any fault of Jay and Leslie, the applicants, but through the nature, as some people have pointed out more than once, of the area, the lifestyle that we lead in the area traditionally. I've lived there for some 12-plus years now. And I think what, what you're hearing from the community is that there's, there's a real feeling that there's a lot of pressure coming from the urge, not just a certain urge, but a policy, I think, at the county level to favor and aggressively promote business development of an entrepreneurial nature, which is understood. However, you don't want that to destabilize your neighborhoods that are well-established, because those have a value in and of themselves. So just in the interest of putting in all the stakeholder, you know, input to this project, I think I want to make sure that you hear that we're feeling a lot of pressure. There is a clear memory of the Montessori project and how that was opposed but overridden. And so that is part of the, perhaps, emotional reaction to this project, right? Above and beyond all the due diligence that's been done to focus on the use of the property itself, we're more focused on the bigger picture, commercial development happening outside the sphere of influence, and the other impacts that have been noted in terms of density of population, traffic, et cetera. So I would ask that you consider that maybe this project isn't really being put in in the right place for the overall goals of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else that wishes to speak, seeing none, hearing none?
Yes, I'm sorry, Taylor, up to Chair. I do have a write-in comment from...
That was just handed up? Or it's a new one?
I have another one in addition to the one that was just handed to me.
Okay, so you're going to read a couple. You can also read that one that was handed up, too. We'd like to hear that.
Yes, I was planning to.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're going to be doing some reading, Jodina.
Thank you. I have a write-in comment, the first one from Matthew Coulter of Grass Valley. He states that this project is ill-suited for the location. Also, he is concerned with public health and safety and fire dangers when persons come to the community. I have a second write-in comment from, and forgive my attempt to read the handwriting accurately, Suzie Gregna?
Yena.
Yena, at 15, excuse me, 10513 Wolf Road. She states, "I live three parcels away from the proposed project on Katy Lane. I'm opposed to this project for the following reasons. I'm concerned about how this will affect our wells and water supply. Traffic on Wolf is already significant and many folks speed. The traffic impact would be negative." Excuse me, I'm trying to interpret the handwriting accurately. I feel if this project gets approved, it will be, it will open the floodgates for others to do the same. I moved to my property 27 years ago to live a rural lifestyle, as many of my neighbors did. By approving this, it changes everything for us. I do not approve." Signed, Suzie Yena, Kelly and Ron. I have a third write-in comment, addressed to our principal planner. "Thank you for receiving letters from the community regarding the proposed Wolfcraft Collective on 10734 Wolf Road. This is such an amazing project, and after reviewing the website and speaking personally with both Leslie and Jay, I'm in complete support of their proposal. The back edge of our property borders the property of Leslie Barbizette and their Wolfcraft Collective project, and we're delighted to have such dynamic, community-oriented neighbors. The classes and mission will bring both education, land stewardship skills, and awareness, and community connection to this neighborhood. My kids will love the farm animals and opportunity to learn how to create wool, woodworking, and various skills. Thank you so much for your time and attention to these matters. Signed, Lydia and Jeremy Feldman from Grass Valley." That is all.
Thank you, Jodina. Tyler, if you'd like, can you address some of the zoning and staff issues, and including the perpetuity of the use permit?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. I would question if the Commission would like maybe a five-minute break before launching into that? Whatever you want to do.
Need a break?
I will.
Let's, let's do that. We'll take a five-minute break and reconvene here at 4:06.
Thanks.
Chair, I appreciate the break. So several questions, several questions have been raised during the public hearing process, and I will try and take them in order of how I wrote down the notes. So a couple times, it was addressed about the Higgins area plan, and that the Higgins area plan dictated that all commercial development has to be within the community region of Higgins area. That is not true. The Higgins area plan didn't establish a green belt or something that didn't allow for other development to occur outside of that plan. It focused high-intensity commercial uses within those zones focused on housing and recreational opportunities. The allowance to have a low-intensity camp, a community meeting facility, or a school in the agricultural zoning district has been part of the county's zoning regulations since the passing of the zoning ordinance in 2000. So a private citizen who owns land within this zoning district has the ability to seek a conditional use permit if they can demonstrate that their property and their project can conform with the county's site development standards, resource protection standards, and that all impacts associated with their project can be mitigated to levels of lessened significance. The project applicant has done so. There was a discussion about agritourism and how counties need to provide for better agritourism. Nevada County is very unique. We allow agritourism without a conditional use permit. So if a property owner has agricultural zoning or residential agricultural zoning and has an established agricultural use, they can host events, they can have Airbnbs, they can have schoolchildren at site, and there's no permits required for this. The applicant is seeking and going through the rigors of a conditional use permit on their own accord. There was some discussion about the camp or the campground. This is not a traditional campground where anyone from the public can reserve a site and come camp. It's a camp. Camping aspect is associated with the learning and the other activities on-site that are amenities. The lodging is a part of that, and it's all together. In Nevada County, we're actually an area with lots of camps. Camp Delora, Wolf Mountain Camp, Christian Ministries Camp, goes on and on and on. Most of these camps are in agriculture or forest-zoned areas. So there is a desire by people who have camps such as this to be in the rural setting and to provide a natural experience. Wolf Road, 10911 Wolf Road, the former Montessori school, is known agricultural ten, same as this particular project. My understanding is they will be using both NID, water, and a well to irrigate their landscaping. Their landscaping is designed to be mostly native and drought-tolerant plants, and so it's also designed to meet the county and the state's model water-efficient landscape ordinance, and therefore, the idea is, once those plants are established, they no longer need regular irrigation. Within the agricultural zoning district, there are several commercial uses which are allowed.
Can you speak a little closer to them? I know Tyler's struggling a little bit with his voice as well, so...
No, that's fine. It's just I'm getting a lot of feedback, so trying to keep it at a level...
Yeah, don't hurt our ears.
Yeah, so agricultural zoning districts, commercial allowances in agricultural zoning districts span a lot of different types of uses, many of which do require a conditional Things like bed and breakfasts, community meeting facilities, nurseries, plant and retail, veterinary hospitals, hospitals and clinics, this is actually considered a low-intensity recreational use. Whether there's commercial aspects to it or not is irrelevant to what is allowed in the code for them to search and to seek, which is a low-intensity camp. Schools are also allowed with the use permit, so, you know, there's a little bit of a tie there, but as I defined earlier, this is a facility that provides lodging, tent cabins, tent platforms, but also provides programs to support those folks on-site. There was a question about light pollution. One of the conditions of approval do require that all lights be turned off at 11:00 p.m. All lights be downward-facing and fully shielded, consistent with International Dark Skies ordinance. So lighting has been addressed and is consistent with the code. There was some question about fencing. Nothing would preclude this property owner from fencing their property just like anyone else. It's my understanding that originally, the wood fence in the top corner of the property was intended to help buffer the events area. That area will be no longer developed for events, and therefore, it's under the applicant's purview if they'd like to provide security fencing, open wildlife-type fencing, barbed-wire fencing, which is consistent with this area. There was a question about what about the birds? Consistent with all use permits and all discretionary actions, there's requirements for a, to do a bird survey prior to doing construction activities. And that mitigation measure was augmented at the request of the State Department of Fish and Wildlife to go from February to, is it October? Originally, most standard mitigation is March to October. The conditional use permit. So a conditional use... So a conditional use permit in Nevada County and in all areas typically runs with the land. So this applicant, should they choose, if they are approved, or have the ability to sell this parcel or this project to someone else, just like anyone else who's received a conditional use permit in Nevada County. There was a lot of concerns and questions brought up about fire. As I previously mentioned, significant thought and analysis as well as consultation with the appropriate fire professionals has gone into designing this project. If you'll notice, most of the materials of buildings are concrete and steel, fire resistant. It does require, correct, it does require an evacuation plan, be prepared prior to operating. It requires defensible space consistent with any other residents in the county. So while certainly fire is a significant concern in our county, they have done everything to meet the intent and the requirements of the county's codes and regulations. There was some discussion about traffic. This project as designed with the events was anticipated to add 53 peak hour trips, which is pretty minor on a road such as this. It's unfortunate that it appears, you know, maybe many of the drivers that go down this road don't adhere to traffic laws, but no one intends to go wreck into a tree. The idea of people will be camping and learning about ceramics and then having a beer or some wine and driving around, there's nothing precluding anyone who lives in this neighborhood from doing that. As a economic development opportunity, the idea of bringing people to Nevada County to shop at the local stores and restaurants, that's kind of the thing that the planning department likes to see. And if that project can meet the code requirements, can demonstrate that they can comply with all the standards and regulations and can mitigate those impacts. It's kind of my short notes. I'm not sure if I missed any of the ones that the commission felt that I should try and address. Many of the comments were somewhat repeated in planning. Probably shouldn't say this, but there is that term that we don't want this, this is great, just long as it's somewhere else. But if they move this to somewhere else, they would start the process over, spend all the resources to perform all the studies to also have neighbors that don't want it in their backyard.
Thank you, Tyler. I guess if any of the commissioners have any more further questions for you, you'll hear them. So at this time, I will invite the commissioners to ask questions or provide comments on the project and we will start with Commissioner Duncan, this project is in her district.
Tyler, one of the things that I struggled with is understanding the concept of the low intensity camping. And to me, what it really is, is lodging. It's not camping. They don't want a campground. I mean, my mind, low intensity camping is normally a seasonal activity as outlined by you with those examples of existing camps. This is not a seasonal campground. This is a full-on campground and with the hopes and intents that it's going to be successful and so I think there will be many more people utilizing the project.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Duncan, you are correct. The county has a definition and for both a low intensity camp and then a low intensity campground. And this is the latter or the former, excuse me, both of which are allowed with the use permit and axon.
Right, I understand that part, but I mean, to me, it seems like it's the purpose isn't for others outside to come and book a campsite. I mean, it's necessary as part of their business plan to provide some lodging, but not for And so why not just call it lodging?
I think those are semantics. I mean, they could come in for a proposed lodging and a school, but because of the definition before you, which defines an organized, trained leadership with organized programs, plus allowing for sleeping platforms, tents, this use fits into that definition.
I understand that, but I guess I still, I struggle with it in terms of, is it a campground? The use permit that runs with the land, then is that allowing a campground, a low intensity campground to continue on?
It's allowing a low intensity camp to continue on.
Camp, right.
Correct.
So if in fact the art classes, the craft classes go away, the camp feature is still available?
I would, I would say that without the camp part of it, it couldn't just be a campground. There are two different definitions in our zoning code. This proposal is for it to be a camp.
A camp.
Correct. Similar to Camp Augusta or one of the other camps that are out there.
Which, I mean, I conjure up in my mind what that looks like as a seasonal type of use and limited impact in terms of, it's not year-round.
I think Camp Delora is year-round, much more intense than this, but I think you could put it this way. Those types of camps and the white cloud campground where anyone can reserve and come camp, they're not the same thing.
Right, I understand that one. These will have structures of sorts so that people will have lodging.
My concern with like using the term lodging is that that is more like all encompassing where that might include something like a motel or other kind of facilities that are like go way beyond what this is proposing. So I think calling it lodging is, I think is a, would be a mis, personally, I think would be a misnomer for this.
Mm-hmm.
In all fairness.
As proposed, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I take that point. The other is that, I mean, this is proposed over a three-phase construction and the last thing anyone wants to see is a failed project without any guarantees for the neighborhood that if indeed will there be light that they have to deal with. And that's never something that is very popular thought there. I'm wrestling with the project as submitted, doesn't, it's not compatible with the rural character. I went back to the Land U settlement and it talks about the rural region where growth is limited, consistent with open rural lifestyle, pastoral character, and natural setting, and that the rural designations intended to provide compatible uses within a rural I don't know that this is maintaining and enhancing that, those qualities that we talk about, that we ascribe to the rural area. And I hear the concerns of the neighbors. I think those are legitimate, that their ability to freely enjoy the land as they've had it certainly gives them the right to come up and protest it. But I'm struggling with this one and I'm looking forward to hearing from the rest of the commissioners as to where their thoughts are.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan. Commissioner Grist.
I personally want to say I think this is a really cool project. As somebody who enjoys ceramics and the arts myself, I would love to take a class here. I think that the aesthetics of the buildings that you're proposing are really elevated and look frankly, very expensive and I think would blend into the landscape really well. You're using really toned down materials that are typical to the area in a contemporary way and I think it would pose fairly minimal aesthetic disruption from any public way. I personally was just looking at doing a retreat at Esalen earlier today and I think that, you know, if you look at kind of retreat centers like that, they're always typically in rural settings because that's where you can focus on, you know, immersing yourself into an experience that is non-urban in nature. I think that it's, I think it's great. That's what I think.
Commissioner McAtier.
Well, I have more questions, so I'm not the five-minute type. So Leslie, I want to admit to the audience that I drove up to the site. I didn't realize that you were living there, so I apologize for sort of barging into your living quarters. Thank you for sharing a few moments. And then I happened to be leaving the property and ran into Mr. Gregory here who was painting signs, so I've heard both sides before coming here today. I reviewed your website also, so thank you very much for providing as much information and I feel like I have a lot of information, but I have a few questions. I also went and viewed the New Jersey site here, the Peters Valley site, and that brings me to one of my, one of my personal concerns is the dining aspect, that you're asking 40 people to come and stay all day and that they're going to go to a food truck for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. I don't, I don't think that's the way you're going to attract people, maintain people, et cetera. So do you have any feedback to me? Because I see on Peters Valley here, you know, they've got a mess hall and they've got, you know, dormitories, et cetera. So talk to me about food service if you would, please.
Sure. Peters Valley is a lot bigger, has a lot of students, I think, and they can handle in the hundreds at one time. But our plan is to have, so our food truck would have a kitchen off-site that we would work with and we would plan for the amount of students that we have at that time to have the option to eat there. I would imagine there are some people that wouldn't want to stay as well, but we want to have enough food for people that are there. There was a comment also about, you know, in the middle of the night, you know, I've stayed at places where they have kind of a, what is it, where it's called like a, it's sort of a pantry, but it's kind of like a trust, like you leave, you leave a certain amount of money when you take a bag of chips kind of thing. So we're envisioning having something like that, kind of like a pantry where people could take things and, you know, put their name on it and, you know, I've stayed in a lot of places like that where it's a trust system and it works pretty well. So we do want to offer, you know, cold food as well as warm food. When I think about the type of food that we're doing, you know, I'm very inspired by Hartwood, which is actually Gigi, his, her son owns that. You know, I haven't said that yet, but I would love it if we could have like Hartwood Annex where we get to serve that same kind of food, where it's kind of component food.
So in the, in the beginning of the process, are you bringing an outside vendor in? Is that what you're looking at? Or are you, are you doing the cooking?
I mean, no, we're, well, we're either going to bring in an outside vendor or we're going to hire someone to do the food. I think that would be, I'm, I'm not going to sign up to make the food, that's for sure. That would be one of the employees.
Okay. And, and was, was the thought all along to have lodging on the facility? Or was there ever a thought to be able to say, well, Lee, let's not be in the lodging business, let's just be in the craft business and so we can offer locally to Auburn people, Grass Valley people, that they come and just do their, their crafts on site?
It was important to us to have a component of being able to get away and offering it to people from out of town. The, the hotels around here are pretty expensive and so we wanted to make sure that we offered a place for people to stay in nature, you know, having a comfortable camping situation. I don't love the word glamping, but that's essentially what we're talking about here. And so, you know, it's at a place for people to come away and have an immersive experience rather than just taking a class. You know, there's Curious Forge for that.
So it's always been in the plan, the lodging slash?
The whole experience.
Craft, yes, okay.
When we were looking at the phasing, we were like, oh, how should we do this? Should it just be the school at first? Should it be this? And we, it was important to us to have the whole experience, which is, that's why we started with a couple of classrooms first with all of the lodging, so we could have that balance.
Okay. And you're, when you talk about security, is that actually the two of you who were the security arms of the, of the facility?
For now.
Okay.
And, you know, we live on the land because we're here to build it.
Right.
That's why we're here.
Right.
You know, in terms of people wandering off, you know, we will have security fencing for sure.
Okay.
And the security fencing that we're building at the top of the land will do in concert with our neighbors that will border that property and make sure that they're happy with what that looks like.
So to ensure that the, we don't have a Montessori-esque operation again, could you discuss, you know, this is a multimillion dollar endeavor that you're going in. Could you discuss the financing that you've obtained or have planned or whatever else for this?
Sure. So I took a second mortgage on my home to do this process and so we have some money set aside for that, really to get us through this process. We are going to be fundraising, like I mentioned earlier, it is a nonprofit and so we'll be doing a lot of fundraising and a lot of networking with local businesses and the local arts community to be raising money. We've already started that endeavor, talking to people, but we can't raise money until we have a use permit. So that endeavor, you know, I thought that was going to be the hardest thing was the fundraising. Now I'm in this process and this is a little, little harder. But yeah, our, as soon as we get the use permit, doing the fundraising is going to be the next, the next step as well as grants and, what's the other thing besides grants? So working with arts council to understand all the different ways that we can raise money through just donors and grants and, you know, working with companies that, one of the plans for the week-long experiences is to have companies doing retreats. So because we are a nonprofit, we'll be tax deductible for bigger corporations, so we're going to do some big outreach on some corporations that find that attractive and so we can offer retreats for different companies for week-long experiences.
Thank you very much. Let me turn to, you have something to say, Tyler, I'm sorry. No, okay, let me turn to planning for a minute.
Terry, to follow up on the retreats, so that would be an allowable use outside of this use permit?
Well, the, can I clarify what I mean?
I'm directing it to Tyler, the planner.
In terms of, I'm sorry, I didn't follow the?
I thought the special events component was taken out.
It is.
And then I hear that they want to propose corporate retreats. Would that be an allowed use under this use permit?
As long as it doesn't exceed 40 campers at any given time and meets all the other conditions of approval.
Okay. And these are the details that matter. They might not be as important now, but I mean, I think it's absolutely critical that the applicant understands what is and what isn't. And more importantly, that the neighbors have a clear vision of what is going to be happening.
Sure. When I, can I step in for a second and just clarify what I meant? One of the retreats is working with a company who has a set number of employees that would come and stay on the land for a week and we would tailor the classes that we offer directly to them. It would be the same, same operation that we have day in, day out. It would just be one paying customer that would be paying for all the students. They would all be from the same company, but it would be the same operations.
Right, thank you. To follow up on that, do you have a budget for the first phase? I mean, that initial investment is going to take you to what?
When we did the budgeting, it included the events and all of the, like the septic was designed for 150 people, which it's not going to be anymore. So I haven't recalculated, but for phase one, it's about $3 million with, including the events. So we're hoping it'll be, that would be the max and it wouldn't be as much as that.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, Terry.
No, no, no. Chime in anytime. So let's move, Tyler, to, you know, I've got to thinking, if, if this wasn't on this type of property, rural 10, where could it go? And so I looked in Chapter 1 of the general plan, and I see that rural comprises 30% of Nevada County and forest comprise 56%, and open space comprises 4%. So that, that totals up to 90% of Nevada County is, 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 could be not used for this type of purpose. Where, where else would you, as a planner, direct someone who came to you and said, I'd like to put together a camp and a, and a craft facility together? Where else would you be telling them that they might be looking to put it?
Thank you, Commissioner McAtier, Mr. Chair. This is actually a good question. My colleague steeledly pointed out to me that in Nevada County, low-intensity camps are only allowed in our rural districts.
Really?
So agriculture, forest, TPZ, and agriculture-exclusive campgrounds, however, are allowed in other zones, but low-intensity camps are only permitted in these zoning districts.
Interesting, thank you. Then I, then I looked to Chapter 1, Goal 1 of the general plan, and it says, you know, "To promote and encourage growth in community regions while limiting growth in rural regions." And Policy 111 says, "Maintain a distinct boundary between rural and community regions." What, what does, what does that mean in your eyes, a distinct boundary?
So the county general plan designates areas of community regions.
Right, so Higgins is a community region.
Higgins is a community region where more intensive commercial use is allowed. This is considered a rural region where low-intensity uses are allowed.
Right. So what does a distinct boundary mean?
It's established by the general plan, the, through the Higgins, excuse me, the Greater Higgins Area Plan, they amended the community boundary to incorporate other properties such as street or road into that community boundary. So the Board of Supervisors establishes the county's community boundaries.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm not asking my question correctly. So I know that, and, and would you mind pulling up the Higgins Plan? I have a few questions relative to that, if that's okay.
I don't have the Higgins Plan with me.
You don't have, you can't get it on the internet or anything? No?
That's possible.
Sorry.
Actually, you have it?
I can start to work to pull it up while we're talking. Great, thank you.
I asked Kyle, because Kyle was the planner assigned to that project and worked on it.
Thanks, Kyle.
Yeah, I'm happy to respond.
So, so the, the general, the Higgins Plan ends its sphere of influence at Jennifer Drive. And then that would mean to me a distinct boundary. And so I'm trying to understand a distinct boundary between rural and community regions. I don't know what that, those two words mean.
All right, give me a second here and I'll see what I can do. In concept, I can give you that, usually your intensify, intense uses like industrial, light industrial, commercial, business park are typically packed into community regions.
Yes.
So around Grass Valley is a community region, Penn Valley has a community region. And as you move outside from that community region, the allowances for minimum densities and types of uses gets more or less intensive. So typically, surrounding a community region, you might have some rural residential agricultural zoning properties that allow like five or 10 acres. And as you get farther out, it becomes more agricultural. And usually you kind of go from like Ag 10 to Ag 20 to, and then it becomes forest.
Okay. So, so as I see it, approval of this would sort of extend that boundary. Is that, is that a fair assessment, extend that boundary? No?
No.
No?
This is considered a rural residential, a rural low-intensity use per the county's zoning regulations.
Okay. I'd like to go to Table 1.3 on maximum densities in respective land use designations under Chapter 1 of the general plan on page 136. And it says rural 10, 10-acre minimum parcel size, and then it says maximum units per acre, one for every 10 acres. So what does that mean?
Commissioner McAtier, that means you can have one residential unit on your property if you have 10 acres. But let me rephrase that better. In the Ag 10 zoning district, the county has what we consider minimum densities. And so, so you have 20 acres of land, you are allowed to subdivide that into two parcels. So if you have Ag 10 zoning, regardless of your parcel size, you're allowed a single-family dwelling and accessory dwelling unit and with state law, a junior accessory dwelling unit. These units or lodging is not considered density or a unit or a dwelling unit. The, the county's code allows for up to four campers per acre in a low-intensity camp. And so therefore, at 15 acres, they could have up to 60 people.
So they could have proposed 30, 30 campsites...
Correct.
...there and it'd still be within the county's...
Correct.
Then I went to the zoning, I don't know what to call it, zoning section, and it's, I went under rural districts. And the purpose of the section, I'll just read it, to go in the record, is to preserve the existing open pastoral character of rural areas, allowing for the development of compatible uses within the rural setting, including lower-density residential uses, agricultural operations, and support uses, natural resource production and management, and low-intensity recreation. And then, under that, under subsection B, it says general agriculture. And so I'd, I'd like a little clarification on this. The Ag District provides areas for farming, ranching, agricultural support facilities and services, low-intensity uses, and open space. It is consistent with all agriculturally-oriented general plan use designations, then this statement, "as well as those designations that allow for more intensive uses." I guess this is one of those more intensive uses that you're referring to.
Under table, the allowable land uses table, this use is defined under recreational uses as a low-intensity camp.
And what about the next sentence, which says agricultural uses are the primary importance and all other uses are secondary?
Correct. And that's why they're seeking a use for it.
Okay. Let me, let me move to my question that's in the, in the packet, and it refers to the centralized septic system. So I'm not a septic expert, and I see we don't have any, any plans relative to the septic system because we haven't approved it, I guess. So I'm interested in, even though it's going to be narrowed down in size, what is a centralized septic system will require a variance as the soils do not meet standard, standard centralized system requirements? What is that?
My understanding, in speaking with the Environment Health Department, is the depth of the trenches need to be at least five feet. And on this land, when you get to five feet, the soils aren't conducive towards providing that. And so they need a variance to provide for not providing those five feet.
So what's this, what's the, I know what, I know, I know what a residential septic system looks like. You have a, you know, you have a tank and then you just go out to a leach field. Is it similar to that?
It's the same.
It's the same, it's just larger.
It just needs to be sized to accommodate the maximum number of people allowed on the site, which was 150, and now it'll be 50.
There's also some pretty major monitoring. I was, I was just about to put a centralized system on a project and decided not to go in that direction because there are these pretty intensive requirements for monitoring and yearly site visits.
And that's compared to a what?
As compared to a standard system.
I see.
And so this is combining multiple sources on one centralized system, but with that comes these other monitoring and reporting requirements. It's quite intensive from my understanding.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. My, my next question, how are we doing on getting Higgins up there? Any, any hope on that?
Sir, I'm having no luck with my computer getting it up there.
Okay, well, that's okay. I'll, I'll ask the question still when I get there. My next question is, under page 83, under the initial study and checklist, you, you noted that it is less than significant with mitigation, and I'm referring to page 83, number C. And the question is, under sequестuff, in, "Would the project in non-urbanized areas substantially degrade the existing visual character or quality of public views and the site and its surroundings? Public views are those that are experienced from publicly accessible vantage points. If the project is in an urbanized area, would the project conflict with, well, it doesn't matter, with applicable zoning and other regulations?" So it's not in a, it's not in an urban area. And so I, I drove up and down the road number of times. I know that area very well. And so my question is, that I tend to think that the house is going to be next to the pond potentially, they're going to see the camp, some of the campsites, the other campsites will be up on the ridge, but most of the classrooms and, and, classrooms and work areas are going to be exceedingly visible as you drive down the road. And so I'm, I'm wondering how it's then less than significant with mitigation? Because you can put that, you can put that map up there and you can, slide seven or so again would be great.
My computer just kind of shut down, so...
Oh, okay.
We might have a good slide seven or anything else.
We're, we're technologically challenged today.
So essentially, one response is the applicant has prepared and provided architecture that's consistent with the Western Nevada County Design Guidelines.
Yeah.
They've strived to fit that architecture into the hillside so that it will be less intrusive. They're providing extensive landscaping to help screen that. And essentially, I can't read that. That is how they met the lessons in the game. Now, the mitigation refers to oaks, and so that's the oak planting to help provide additional screening in trees. There is a subjective nature to that, and the Planning Commission is responsible and has the authority to do design review. From staff's standpoint, they've met the criteria.
You are the, I guess you're the one who, someone checks the box that says it's less than significant, and that's sort of a, I guess, a, a judgment call. Is that a fair statement?
I would say that it's, there's somewhat subjectivity, but again, there's a set of design guidelines adopted by the Board of Supervisors that's been vetted through the Commission when it went through, and staff reviewed that, this project for compliance with those standards. And it was a determination of the staff member who prepared the initial study that the project could meet those standards.
Okay. So I'd, since no one else can see the Higgins Plan, I'm sorry about that. I, I have a question. On page 26 of the Higgins Plan, it is entitled "Existing Land Uses Within the Plan Area." And all of the properties that surround this specific property are, as you can see here, are all in this white zone, but the only property that's in this area that is, is colored, which is an agricultural piece of property. But everything else, I gather, is also agricultural, but I'm just trying to understand why the Planning Department only put that existing property as agricultural.
Mr. McAtier, the Higgins Area Plan has no bearing on this project. This project is not within the boundaries of the Higgins Area Plan, and it's therefore not subject to the policies and requirements of the Higgins Area Plan.
Using the, the Higgins Plan that shows all the land uses around it, and I'm not, I'm not trying to impose the Higgins Plan, I'm just trying to say, here's your plan with, with your designation on it.
And then that's all Ag.
Right. Right. And then why, then why, Commissioner Garst, is that the only property that's, has a different color?
I think it's the existing land use, saying that that is existing, is like currently being used.
Yeah, and to clarify, Commissioner McAtier...
Sure.
That was at the time of plan development, the actual uses that existed on the land. Because this property was not developed as single-family residential, like the surrounding yellow, it was not identified as single-family residential.
So that, so that there was no structures on the property, it's just sitting as agricultural? Is that what you're saying to me?
That is correct, because this is a map of the existing land uses at the time the plan was adopted.
Okay, great, thank you. Then, so, is the Higgins Plan have no bearing on this even though this isn't in the, it would be in the sphere of influence of, of, of the Higgins Plan?
Yes, I can speak to that. The areas of influence that were identified in the Higgins Area Plan helped inform the policies within the plan area. The policies that were developed for the plan don't apply outside of the plan area. So those areas of influence were developed so that neighboring community members, neighbors that were outside the plan area, still could have some say in what occurred within the plan area, but it doesn't necessarily work the other way.
Okay. So Tyler, I have a question. I also, I went, when I met with Leslie, I was, I was concerned by her, by the fact that, I gather you've been working with her directly over the last few years in terms of before she purchases property. Is that a fair statement?
Mr. McAtier, just like anyone else who calls the Planning Department, I happen to be the planner working the counter that day, and Leslie called, looking for property to do something like this. And so we helped go through the zoning ordinance, we looked at a few different properties that she was looking at buying that were for sale. We gave her some information related to some of the pitfalls of those properties, such as one of the properties was beyond the dead-end road limit and would require secondary access, where this property was on the county-maintained road. But we don't mandate that they buy our property, we provide guidance to anyone seeking guidance from the Planning Department.
So, so if Leslie and, and, I'm sorry...
Jay.
Jay came to you and said, gee, do you think that I could put a camp and a, and a, you know, craft shops there? How, how does this conversation take place? I'm trying to, I'm trying to be ensuring that the Planning Department is not a cooperative, I mean, they're cooperative, but they're not, they're not compromising themselves.
Absolutely. So what we recommended is she do a pre-application. And that pre-application determined the feasibility of a project from what conditions were required, what would be opposed, what they would have to do to meet the code requirements. They went through that process, they got the comments back, they found it feasible, and submitted an actual application. We work with all our applicants.
So there was no, yeah, that, there was nothing before they purchased the property that said, gee, that's a good piece of property to do this on?
That's untrue, because she said...
Okay.
We have a property that we found that's for sale.
Yes.
It's got this zoning. Would this work for the use that we might want to propose? And Planning looks at our codes and regulations and says, wow, that zoning does fit.
Okay.
Therefore, you might want to do a pre-application.
Okay. Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Tyler. I, I would just like to add that the just recently completed Higgins Area Plan came before this commission, and we sent a recommendation to the Board to approve it, and the Board didn't approve it. So we were an integral part in reviewing that Higgins Area Plan. So that being said, I'd like to turn to the applicants, and I have a couple of questions. So let's, my first question has to do with alcohol, because it's been brought up here. So I can either ask, you know, if I were to ask, I would say, are you going to be selling alcohol? I don't think so. But if you could kind of explain to me how alcohol fits into the program.
Sure. I would imagine that when we sell dinner, or when we provide dinner, that we would offer beer and wine. And that could either be like people bringing their own, or we could offer it. I don't know what the ins and outs of the rules are, that's something that we haven't gotten deep into, but it would be something that we'd like to offer.
Okay. Because I would assume getting permitting to sell alcohol would be a difficult pull for you, but at the same time, you or any of your neighbors can have friends over and offer them a glass of wine and beer or whatever.
offer them a glass of wine and beer or whatever. So, um, I, I'm anticipating that that's how we'll see alcohol used there. My other question is, um, why the, and in one of the drawings I saw, it, it looked like it was tiered or sloped on a, on a hillside, but why the two stories? Why the parking under the structure, the tent structure?
So you don't see a bunch of cars. You know, we want to, we want to keep the natural integrity, and a bunch of cars parked doesn't really do that, so, because it's on a hill, and when we were designing the platforms, we were like, oh, maybe we could fit a car under there, so it's not so visible. So you just see, you know, wood and platforms rather than a bunch of cars.
Yeah, I noticed that in the, in the drawings, the elevations, and it looked like, looking at the tent cabins, you were just looking at the front of them, and the cars were down the hill.
Right.
So I guess I commend you for that.
Thanks.
Um, and incidentally, I just, you know, I, I also want to commend you for this process that you've gone through. You've worked hard, it's been, it's been a long, a long slug, and it appears that, and, and you're not always going to be successful, but it appears that you have done everything you can to reach out to the neighbors in an attempt to be a good neighbor. Um, and I think that the, the biggest tell of that is pulling the event, um, aspect out of this proposal. That being said, according to our event ordinance, they can have eight events on their property if they didn't do this. Is that correct, Tyler?
That would be correct.
Okay. Um.
For the record, though, we're not planning on doing events. We want to be good neighbors.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like, but I'm just bringing it up as a point that.
Sure.
That, let's say this application was denied, and you could just go ahead and have eight big weddings a year without.
We technically could.
You know, just going through the, the little, you know, pro forma paperwork that you have to do here.
We also want to live in our community and not have our neighbors hate us.
Gotcha.
So that's important to us.
Um, I, I often say that, um, you, you know, there's, there's pros and cons to everything. I think this is a great project. It's, I, you know, they've heard, they've heard me say this before here, in front of our folks. If not this, what? Um, and this seems to be a more appropriate fit in this type of environment than other things. Um, I would assume you can build a winery on this project, property?
Without a use permit, correct.
Without a use permit. You can open a tasting room, would that require a use permit?
No use permit.
No use permit. So the question, if not this, what, is, you know, it's not so much a pick your poison, but, you know, when presented an opportunity for something that's better than what it could be, um, I think that's commendable. One of the things that I would like to see in this particular business model is reaching out. I know that there's an age limit, eighteen, was it sixteen or eighteen?
It was sixteen to take classes, but to stay overnight, you'd need to be with an adult if you're under.
And, and gotcha, that's only if you stay overnight.
Yeah.
So I, I would certainly hope that you're going to be reaching out to younger folks in our schools.
Yep.
And promoting the property, and marketing it, and coming up with some type of incentives and discounts or whatever it may be to our local kids in our schools.
Yeah.
To have them be able to, um, participate in this experience.
Absolutely, and that's why we did sixteen. Um, we, you know, I'm not against going younger, it's really a liability, and there are craft schools for kids around, summer camps and that kind of thing is much more accessible than what we're, you know, there's not as many adults, you know, what we're trying to do here. Um, but yeah, we, we've talked about going to Bear River and having those students come over and take classes with us. We met with Matt Gotchoks, who is the head of art and design at Sierra College, and he sent in a letter to Tyler in support, and we're going to work with them because they have a, they have a policy at Sierra College where you can't repeat craft classes, which is really unfortunate, and so they can send people to, over to us, and so we're looking forward to working with them. We're also looking forward to working with Curious Forage, they are really wanting more people from the Bay Area to come up, and so we're going to brainstorm how to work together to get more people from out of town visiting those kind of craft schools. So we're excited to be part of the craft community and help grow it, for sure, and including kids as much as we can in that, too.
You know, we, you know, we see a lot of applicants, and it's, it's rare that we see applicants like you who have appeared to, um, dot all the i's and cross all the t's, so I commend you for that.
Thank you.
Um, I'd be happy to support this project.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Commissioners, just for, um, earlier, Commissioner Garst brought up something about the thirty-day stays, and so I wanted to suggest some condition language for that. Condition A six, already talks about the maximum number of campers, and if it's the purview of the commission, I would suggest adding overnight stays are limited to no more than thirty days, just to be consistent with the code. It's already required because it's a code requirement, but just to make it specific in this ordinance. The other request, uh, if the planning commission foretaking action is, one thing that maybe got kind of slipped through when we removed all the events was the standard noise, uh, condition of approval, and so I would recommend adding that as a condition of approval to meet the county's noise standards.
So that would be included in a motion to add those two specific items, and.
If that's the purview of the commission, correct.
Okay, and then one last question. The, the, the phased, the seven-year phased aspect of this project, um, does that mean it comes before us for review before, or we're approving all three phases over the seven years?
Correct. The county's code allows for phased projects to occur over a period of seven years.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay, with that, I don't know if somebody would like to entertain a motion or have anything further?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, is that due of the verdict that I can lean on in specific?
It's tomorrow's motion.
Make a motion. Um, I make, okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, so there's, is there, there's four motions to be made? Is that correct?
Five.
Five, okay. And there's another page. Um, I make a motion to approve the environmental action, um, adopting the proposed mitigation, mitigated negative declaration, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, EIS twenty-three dash zero zero three, uh, two, as amended and provided in attachment two pursuant to sections one five zero seven three point five subsection C, subsection one, one five zero seven four, and one five zero nine seven of the Environmental Qualities Act guidelines, and make findings A through D. Those are all applicable still?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner, if you do want to make those findings as part of your motion, you should.
I should read them off.
You should state, either the, either read them off or put on the record that they are as listed in the staff report that's been published.
And make findings A through D as listed in the staff report.
Is there a second? Well, I'll second the motion. Jordina, if you'll call the roll, please.
Thank you. On this motion, um, how do you vote? Commissioner Duncan?
No.
Commissioner McAtire?
No.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
And Chair Mastro Donato?
Yes. So we have a, being that we have four commissioners, our fifth commissioner is missing today, the vote is two to two, which means the motion fails.
Correct.
Folks, please.
Is that, do we?
You should go through all the motions.
Keep, keep going.
Correct.
Um, so I make a motion to approve the proposed aquatic resource management plan, Management M two three dash zero zero two one, allowing encroachment into the onsite aquatic resources, subject to the attached mitigation measures and conditions of approval, and make findings A and B pursuant to Title twelve, Chapter four, Section twelve point oh four point two one seven of the Nevada County Code, in that encroachment into the setback of the waterways is necessary in order to provide project infrastructure. Uh, A, that the project has been designed to reduce the impacts of the waterways to the maximum extent possible by installing barriers to protect aquatic features, performing restorative plantings, and to ensure soils, uh, soil and other pollutants do not enter the waterways, and B, all the mitigated, uh, anticipated impacts to the resources will be minimized by the protection measures specified in the management plan, conditions of approval, and the mitigation measures.
On this motion, how do you vote? Commissioner Duncan?
Um, I'll second the motion.
Excuse me?
It's okay. Jordina, go ahead and call the roll.
On this motion, how do you vote? Commissioner Duncan?
No.
Commissioner McAtire?
No.
Commissioner Garst?
Uh, yes.
And Chair Mastro Donato?
Yes.
Thank you.
The vote is two to two, the motion fails.
Um, I make a motion to approve the proposed management plan, MGT twenty-four dash zero 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 four, for oak resources, allowing for the removal of twelve oaks within the onsite landmark oak grove, subject to the attached mitigation measures and conditions of approval, and make findings A and B pursuant to Section twelve, uh, section Title twelve, Chapter four, Section twelve point oh four point two, two one five of the Nevada County Code, in that encroachment into the landmark oak grove is necessary in order to provide project infrastructure. A, that the project has been designed to reduce the impacts on the low landmark oak grove to the maximum extent possible, and that compensative, uh, measure, mitigation measures, including onsite planting of oaks, implementing best management practices to protect, protect trees, and five-year monitoring of the oak trees. And B, all of the anticipated impacts to the resources will be minimized by the protection measures specified in the management plan, conditions of approval, and the mitigation measures.
I'll second.
On this motion, how do you vote? Commissioner Duncan?
No.
Commissioner McAtire?
No.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
And Chair Mastro Donato?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion fails.
Um, Commissioner, I know counsel advised that you read each of those findings, but typically, uh, the commission just cites that those findings as shown in the staff report. It's a lot of reading to do.
Saved you.
Thank you. Um, okay, um, on to four. I make a motion to approve the petition for exemption to driveway standards, PFX twenty-four dash zero zero six, subject to the conditions included in Attachment one, making findings A through E as stated in the staff report pursuant to Nevada County Code Title sixteen, Chapter ten, Section sixteen point ten point one two zero.
I'll second.
On this motion, how do you vote? Commissioner Duncan?
No.
Commissioner McAtire?
No.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
And Chair Mastro Donato?
Yes, the vote is two to two, the motion fails.
Are any, for five, are any of those struck out, or does it matter? Struck out for the events?
It does not matter, there is a reference to an events for up to a hundred and fifty guests, but your motion would be not to include that.
Okay. Um, after, uh, I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit, CUP twenty-three dash zero zero six, subject to the conditions of approval and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, Attachment one, in pursuant to the Nevada County zoning regulations, Title twelve, Chapter five, Section twelve point oh five point oh five oh, and twelve point oh five point oh five oh.
And I would have your motion reflect staff's memo, the revised conditions of approval.
Okay, and make the, uh, following findings A through K, uh, striking out the, um, of one hundred and fifty guest events, and, uh, and amended per the staff memo?
Correct.
I'll second that. Jordina, please.
And how do you?
Call the roll.
Yes, thank you. How do you vote? Commissioner Duncan?
No.
Commissioner McAtire?
No.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
And Chair Mastro Donato?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've heard all five?
Yes.
Okay, so it's my understanding, uh, the motion fails. All five motions have failed. It's my understanding that we're in an automatic appeal to the board?
Do we have to make a case as to why we are rejecting this project? Because I, in my opinion, this meets zoning intentions, and so, like, the dissent votes to make a statement.
I would appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Garst, if the motion was to deny the permit based on the, um, recommendations of staff, then your motion would have to include reasoning for why you, uh, made that motion. Because you've made a motion to approve it, and it's failed in a two-two stand vote, um, I don't believe, unless counsel wants to correct, that the commissioners need to clarify the intent for why they denied. Um, Chair Mastro Donato, there is a ten-day appeal period, it's not automatic.
It's not automatic.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, so the, the five motions have failed, and there is a ten-day appeal process?
Correct.
But as noted in your closing comments, Tyler, the applicant is still able to hold events on that site, and they can host classes.
I don't know about hosting classes. Uh, I don't know that that's really defined by the outdoor events ordinance, um, but they would be able to have, uh, events, up to eight per year.
Yeah. I think that might not be quite clear as to that they can't hold classes.
Uh, I'd have to pull up the ordinance, but I don't think it says classes, but it does say other, other stuff. It's usually, it's typically focused around, um, things like, uh, it's actually defined in the staff report, but things like, um, weddings, concerts, festivals, those sort of things. I can pull up the actual definition of the outdoor events, as I do know, I put it in the staff report.
Right, that's the outdoor events, but.
Correct.
Is there specific language preventing them from having a class on their property?
I don't know that there is.
What about?
So, here we go. An outdoor event means any outdoor gathering, including but not limited to festivals, concerts, carnivals, fairs, ceremonies, cultural celebrations, block parties, weddings, and other outdoor event activity, entertainment which is held at any place other than a permanent building, which has been permitted and designed to strike a customer use for the purpose of housing such activities.
Right, I understand the special events, I wasn't identifying a class as being a special event.
I would probably say a class would be a little bit of a stretch.
Is, so schools are allowable use with a conditional use permit under Ag zoning, is that correct?
That's correct.
So they would have to come back and amend the application to exclude, say, off onsite, um, accommodations, and, and, and apply for a school, a conditional use permit as a school?
That would be an option, correct.
And just for clarification, either Trevor or Tyler, if you can kind of explain the appeals process?
Certainly. Um, so the appeals, within ten days, there's an application that you can file with the county board of supervisors' office. Uh, the board of supervisors typically would put that on their next meeting to consider whether that appeal was, uh, submitted within a, the appropriate timeframe, and that's within a, the appropriate timeframe and that the fees were paid. Within thirty days from that action, the board would set an appeal hearing, that hearing would be de novo. Essentially, the board would have the ability to approve, deny, modify, similar to what the planning commission's authority is on the project.
Right, and the public will be notified of that similarly to this process?
Correct, it'd be a very similar process.
Or interested parties, right.
Correct, yeah, a little bit different, some different intricacies to it, but very similar to this.
So, I'd like to explain my vote, because, Joe, because I work on the commission with you and I think you deserve it and my fellow commissioners do too, and so do the applicants. I believe that the, and I, I'm one of these people that have taken pottery classes, drawing classes, all those, I'm a very artsy kind of person, so this has nothing to do with the craft program, this has to do with mainly the, the impact of the site, of the visual impact going down Wolf Road, and I believe that the, we, because of the water courses on that property, we have shoved everything together and tried to shoehorn a project into a sixteen acre parcel that really comes down to about an eight acre parcel, and I just don't think that that is, I think that's much too intensive for rural agriculture. If, if, if all these other ones, like this one in, in New Jersey, have a large piece of property and that they, they focus all their, all their uses right in the center of it. If, if the applicant came back to me and said, gee, I'd like to just put all the facilities, for the most part, up at the top and, and nix the camping idea, and I'd say, great, because I think that there's enough demand within the Auburn Grass Valley community to be able to service metal shop, et cetera, et cetera. I'm, just think that we're completely changing the nature of that neighborhood when we're adding lodging in there.
Thank you. Okay, so I will close the public hearing. Thank you, every, yeah, everyone for coming out and your participation in the process. Thank you to the applicants, the proponents, the opponents, thank you. Okay, moving on.
Do we have someone coming over here?
No, he's just. So Tyler, do you have any information for us?
I, I wait for the room to kind of clear a little bit.
Okay. Folks, the, the meeting's still going on, so if you can, your item is done, you're free to leave. We're not, we're not going to hold anyone here, but we'd like to carry on.
If they did it on fifty acres, I'd be all for it, but on sixteen to cram it and show it, it all looks from Wolf Road. It's all right there in your face, and so put it on fifty, no problem. Sorry.
No, that's okay, I'm just like, I just, I feel bad for the client, the applicant.
I do too.
I think it's very consistent with like, the intent of the code, and I think Tyler.
All right, okay. So our next scheduled meeting is going to be August eighth. Folks, please. Thank you.
All right, so excuse me, our next scheduled hearing will be August eighth in Truckee for the Mercer Sawmill. Beyond that, the next potential project that I can think of that may come might be a twenty or so lot subdivision on top of Red Dog Road and/or a proposed gas station at the corner of Comby Road and Highway forty-nine.
And Tyler, we also have a couple of ordinance amendments that are
That's right.
going out for public comment.
Good point, so the county has released a tiny homes on wheels ordinance, which will allow for tiny homes on wheels to be considered a single-family home or an accessory dwelling unit, that's gone out for public review. I believe the public comment period closes on September fifth, and then the commercial, updates to the commercial cannabis ordinance has been released for public review as well. Correct, you'll make a recommendation on those.
So, maybe this is a question for county council, but are we as private citizens or professionals allowed to make comment, public comments on those ordinances? Or would it be best to kind of stay out of the conversation prior to voting on it?
I would defer to council, but it would be my understanding that if you were to make comments or recommendations outside of your role as a commissioner, then you'd likely need to recuse yourself during the meeting.
And yes, that is confirmed, you are welcome to address public comments on your own, but you would want to not be biased in the vote, so you would want to recuse if you wanted to be a private citizen. You'd have to choose one or the other.
And we are, we're confirmed of a, of a, of a quorum for the Truckee meeting?
Yes, I believe so.
Because I, I remain uncommitted. Okay, and I, and I will, I won't know till first couple of days of August.
Do you know, is that three or four of all the commissioners?
Uh, it's at least three, I don't recall, but I believe it's four.
Okay, and then maybe you can explain that process to us, I, I know I inquired about a party bus, but we could either drive ourselves or?
I believe you have the option of driving yourself, staff will also provide rides up with only two commissioners in the car.
Okay, and you'll, you, we'll be communicating about that through email, I assume, in the next?
Yes.
Week or so, okay.
Yes, I can give you some more details about, about transportation options.
Right, Tyler, is there any controversy on the upcoming Truckee project?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Have you not been receiving emails?
No.
No.
Oh, maybe because it's my district.
What email?
I don't know that we should speak to the item until it comes to public hearing in any detail, but I do know that we received a number of comments.
I have, yeah, I have been receiving emails personally, so.
So it could be a long meeting?
Expect a long meeting.
To quote former supervisor Ted Owens, you might want to pack a dinner.
So, I'd, I'd like to suggest that sometime in the fall, that we have some type of retreat, I don't know what a better word to call it is, but something where it brings the staff together with the commission. I feel very removed from the planning department.
I appreciate that suggestion, actually, Planning Director Brian Foss and I have been discussing reaching out to the commissioners somewhat on a one-on-one basis to just talk about some of your interests as a commissioner, some of the things that you want to see the staff bringing before the planning commission with projects. So that's something that we have been discussing, so I appreciate the comment and we'll work towards that.
Well, I, I think one-on-one's fine, but I also think we need to have some team building, if, I hate those kind of words, but something like that, so that we all feel that we're going down the right same path together while we can disagree like we did today. But there, there, there needs to be this camaraderie that I don't think exists at this point.
We may be, we may be able to organize a workshop of some kind, but we do have to comply with the Brown Act.
I understand all that.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that the planning agency, it's not the planning department versus the planning commission, we are staff to your commission and therefore we're all in this together.
Right, and I'm, I'm just saying that I don't know where we all are, okay? That, how do I put this gently? Is that I feel completely removed from the planning department and I don't think that that's a healthy situation. While I, I don't want to be in your back pocket, I also want to feel that I could have asked that question to you before I asked that question publicly today.
I would certainly encourage you to do so, and that's not been uncommon in our department, and while it's not our intention to sway you one way or the other, we try and provide you information, because again, I reiterate, we are your staff.
I, I, I think that, yeah, so we're in agreement that, I think workshop's a good word, that we can kind of get together and just kind of discuss these processes, so to speak, because I do know that staff is really responsive if you reach out and ask any question. So, anyway, let, let's hold that.
Well, following up on what you're saying, Mike, Terry raised a point. The planning department is a separate unit from the planning commission, it functions, and I don't think there's any under, there's limited understanding of who's in and who's out. Marie was on this originally and I got circulated the pre-app, but she's no longer there. And I'm not criticizing in terms of saying the department's a revolving door. I understand promotions and wanting to go elsewhere, but there's just no connection to the planners and, you know, oftentimes it isn't Brian or your name on the staff report. And I think it's helpful for us to have faces and names and get to know them.
Your point is noted and appreciated.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned, five twenty-four.